Morning, everyone. This is Monday, June 7th. Welcome to our work session workshop agenda of Monday, June the 7th, Volusia County School Board. During this session, we have no public participation. It is merely for the purpose of the board to hear and discuss general business of the school district freely and openly in the public eye. May, will everybody please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please silence your phones. I'd like to welcome the people to the dais. To my left is Mr. Carl Persis, representing District 4. To his right is Mr. Ruben Cologne, representing District 5. To his right is Mr., he's our school board attorney, and he is Ted Doran. All the way to my right is Erin Leibin. She is our school board agency clerk and someone we cannot work without. To her left is Ms. Anita Burnett. She is district representative from District 2. And Ms. Jamie Haynes, to her left is from District 1, and she's vice president this year. To her left is our superintendent, Dr. Scott Fritz. I'm Linda Cuthbert. I represent District 3, and I am serving as your chairperson this year. So, Dr. Fritz, we are going to begin with 2.01, the general fund budget presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I get started, I'd like to thank that wonderful, best, most awesome cabinet that's out in the audience for ending a very successful school year. Thank you very much, guys. Madam Chair and rest of the board, we do have Ms. Sneed here today as we're going to go through the budget workshop. A few general comments before we get started. You know, there are some concerns when it comes to our budget, and as we go through this, this is a process that we began back in May. We'll continue to work through it throughout the summer, and we'll come for final approval in September to this board. But as we get more and more information, we will build this. It's very much like a construction project, you know, build from the ground up, and this is one, as you are getting the most up-to-date current information that we have. I'll say this as well as about the budget workshop as we go forward. One of the things that Ms. Sneed is doing is putting together a brief voiceover for our constituents, as well as Kelly is putting it on the website so that folks don't have to tune in or who don't have time to see the entire workshop can have access to at least the most current information as we have it. As we go through this, you know, there's been a lot of conversation about ESAR funds and about dollars coming down, but there are several things I want to point out as we go forward, and I've heard this board say it, about those areas that are unfunded mandates, things that are required of this school district that there is no funding trail for. And so, as we go through this, I also want to recognize that we are about 2,000 students down, which is 2,000 FTEs less. And as a board, you have been very, very good at making sure that our people are well-protected, taken care of, and continue to receive their employment. So, as we go through today, I think it'll paint a clear picture about where we're headed and what we're utilizing some of those dollars, things that we will be doing and things we won't be doing. Ms. Sneed, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you. So, we are today going to focus on our strategic planning goal, number four, which is our resources and operational processes, and particularly looking at next year's general fund budget projections. If you look at the PowerPoint, I tried to break it down into kind of simple format to let us know where we're planning to, at this point in time, what our projections are for ending the current fiscal year. And this was presented on the 25th, just in a little bit different format, but we're coming in with a projection of spending a little bit more than we have in revenues, which leaves us at a fund balance ending at 7.7. So, the next slide, you'll recall from the last presentation, where we were basically showing a declining fund balance trend. And one of the reasons that that is an issue and a concern for us is because our investment, when we go out to build schools and buildings and infrastructure for our schools, we have to borrow funds to do that, and our financial condition ratio is very important because investors want to make sure that we're in a very solid and solvent position. And we just did issue $80 million in debt. We're almost closing that deal, but they did give us, Moody Investment Agency did give us a negative outlook, and the reason that they did that is because of our declining fund balance. However, we will potentially offset some of that with federal funds, but it's not just the district that's concerned about our financials. It's important from an investment standpoint. This next slide, you'll recall also from the 25th presentation, and this slide just shows with the reduction in the number of FTEs, we are looking at not being at the level that we were pre-COVID, and that equates to an $11 million projected revenue loss for us. There's other things, as Dr. Fritz mentioned, that impact us, declining enrollment and unfunded mandates. So, they kind of add up very quickly, unfortunately. So, again, the $11 million revenue loss, FRS rate increases are impacting us next year by $2 million, and endowment scholarships is the really, really big hit. This year, we budgeted $3 million for those. They came in at $6 million. Next year, we're being told to double that number. So, all of this together, unfunded mandates and declining enrollment hits our general fund by $25 million. The next slide is going to show you kind of what that looks and how that tips the scale. You can see that that hit of 25 millions, combined with some of the other increased costs that we have just for doing business next year, give us an ending fund balance projection of 3%. And all of this, again, is without applying any ESAR dollars, but just to kind of show you the trend, if we don't use ESAR dollars, what our financial condition looks like. So, what we're doing to try to offset this trend is we're saying no more spending on general fund unless it's absolutely critical, and we're looking closely at the general fund to see if there's things that we spent that were COVID-related that we could shift away from the general fund and over to the ESAR fund. What we did is a team of us worked together, and we came up with, identified about $10.4 million of COVID-related expenditures that we feel we can shift over to the general fund, and that's part of ESAR 2, which ESAR 2, we're going to be getting approximately $64 million. We are also going to be getting of that $64 million, 29.6 million that we have to spend by September 1st. And when I say we're getting it, I mean, we have to spend the money, and then we have to submit for reimbursement, and we have to follow all of the guidelines. We have to make sure we meet all of the assurances. There's 15 assurances for ESAR. We have to basically get that all done, get all of our paperwork in well before the 1st of September in order to get that 29.6.
Madam Chair, could I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Persis.
If we could just take a timeout right there?
Sure.
Because this is of interest to the public a lot. So, there's 29.6 million that if we don't spend it, that just means it's not like we given money back because the money's not really here to begin with, right? So, whatever we, well, I'll let you answer that.
Well, okay, so with grant funds and with all of this money that we're getting in grants, it's a moving target sometimes. So, when they tell us that we have an advance directive of 29.6 million to spend by September 1st, we're doing everything we can to make sure that that happens because there's no guarantee that if that doesn't happen, they might say, "You didn't need the money," so that's going away. So, that's kind of the way that we're operating, is that we are going to use this or lose this.
Right.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah. So, my point is, so that's less than three months away, and that seems like a lot of money. Is there a committee or somebody working on this?
Trust me, we're talking at all hours of the morning, night. Every week, we're having a meeting to review where we stand against the plan, and if the plan changes a bit, because, again, we're putting these numbers together, and we're kind of ticking and tying everything. So, if the plan changes, then we're coming up with new plans, and our goal is to leave no money on the table.
Right, and I was just going to ask you, Dr. Fritz, so is it, is this a conversation with the superintendents? I mean, are you all sharing information, and like the full of the school board association should be doing this too, sharing?
And I can tell you what superintendents are doing, and what we've all instructed our staffs to do, because you saw that fund balance without the ESAR funds being in there, which was two percentage points below our board policy. We're looking at general expenditures that are coming up and where they're at, and how we can utilize those ESAR dollars to plug the holes. And if you think of it like, I hate to say, a sinking ship, but that's what you're doing. You're putting in those dollars to make sure that you don't end up in a negative fund balance. So, Lisa and the team are working together. We're also taking measures at the district office ourselves to make sure that we do not add cost to those general dollars. So, we do our position review committees at the district office. We've been working with principals and have put some guidance in for folks that are not in front of children, and we are reviewing that. We're reviewing any of those things coming forward to protect those general funds. So, what Lisa and her team are doing are taking these ESAR dollars, going through the typical budget process that we go through with the school year, and seeing if those areas that have been funded out of general can actually be used with the ESAR funds.
Okay, well, I am happy to hear that you have the committees, and everyone is sort of brainstorming and checking things out to see if that's a legitimized, I guess, purpose for the use of these dollars. You know, I just would not want us to not use every cent if, if at all possible, and not hear about something that we could have used it for, and we didn't know about it till September the 3rd, you know? That's my fear.
And recognize, assigning that $10.4 million in the time we've had ESAR 2 is pretty begone good, actually. And so, when you start to look at that, how we go forward, that's what the team will continually do as they go through the budget process. I'll share with you that when we come back to you on June 22nd, you're going to see, tied to the strategic plan priorities for each of the goals. And so, then at the end, we'll have a general list, and you'll start to be able to prioritize and help us have that conversation about where we spend those funds.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Persis. Ms. Sneed? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Haynes.
That's okay. So, I just want to make sure that we're clear on this piece, because I've worked with grants before, and we're coming up, you know, on July 1, which is the new fiscal year, and with any grant, they never give you the total amount upfront. They always give you like an incremental amount, and then they review the survey data or how you're spending it, or that you've actually shown that you will spend it in the way that it's allowed, and then they make you submit like your compliance documents to show that that's what you've done. So, if I understand this correctly, under ESAR 2, our share from the state is approximately $64 million. They have not released any part of that $64 million yet to us?
Correct.
Correct, okay. What they're doing now is, though, they have finally come out with a piece of guidance, a little late, in my opinion, because at least with other federal grants, you kind of know your timeline. You know, yes, the fiscal year starts on July 1. Depending on the grant, you get 15% to 25% increment in a drop-down until they collect the next FTE or survey data, then they readjust what you get. So, out of that $64 million, they've now given guidance that 29.6 million is going to be somewhat advanced, not fully advanced, and you have until September to meet the 15 assurances, which are the guidelines of what you are or are not allowed to spend it on, and submit how you're going to do that. But what, if I heard correctly, what they're doing differently for this than what they do for our other grants is, you've got to meet the 15 assurances. You've actually got to show that you have spent it, and submit the receipt pieces, and then they'll release that money to you, where before, they would have released the 29.6, say, in the first drop-down. You would have followed the guidance, and then you would have submitted, you would have already had the money, though, to spend to submit the receipts. So, that is my understanding of what we're having to do with this, and they've given us, so for basically about half of the money that they're allocating, it's got to be spent by September.
Correct. Yep, you're absolutely correct with all of that that you stated.
Because that's where people get confused, because sometimes I think people think they just drop in and give us all the money. There's no guidelines. We can do whatever we want, and because I have, I've had a lot of years of working with federal programs, there are guidelines, and there's been years when we have had to pay back money because we've not followed a guideline, because they do audit us very closely on this. All right, well, and Mr. Persis, I know that the team here has been working hard. They've been working ever since they heard about this, and they've had a lot of meetings. Mrs. Cuthbert and I were able to read their plans, you know, separately, but through entirety, and ask a lot of questions, because the one stand I took from day one was it couldn't be anything that was reoccurring funds, because this is not a reoccurring fund source. So, I'm just hoping, I'm hoping that we can not leave anything on the table, because they've really not given us a lot of time to do this, and they're kind of doing it backwards. They're like, "Spend it, submit your receipts," which that always makes me very nervous, because now you're banking on they're going to give you the money back.
Right. There was, in talking to other CFOs out there, one of the things, so basically, school boards that actually did well spending their ESAR 1 dollars actually were given this advance kind of guidance, but districts that didn't weren't given that. And so, the question that was raised by some other districts to Tallahassee, and I haven't heard a response yet, is why are we being penalized where we have like this very short timeframe, and the others just, they still have their full award, but they don't have that timeframe? And that's a good point, but I mean, it begs the question, are the others going to lose their funding if they don't spend it? And these are things we don't know, but we're just working with what we do know, and we're being very diligent to try to take care of every need that we have in the district that can be met with these funds while still meeting the 15 assurances. So, on the next slide, this kind of just gives you an idea of the 10.4 million that we're shifting, and just on a high level, what we did is we kind of scrubbed the general fund to say, "Hey, what is charged to the general fund that really is COVID-related?" And right off the top, the largest thing is that the week after spring break, when everything was kind of shut down, there were no cars on the road, nobody was going anywhere, about 75% of our workforce was just home, not working. The other 25 was working, but the cost of that one week's payroll for 75% of our workforce in the general fund is approximately $6 million. So, we're going to, we're going to put that over to ESAR. Now, we know that that's an ongoing expense that we'll have, so what it's going to do, it's going to help our fund balance in the general fund, but it doesn't change our operating expenses year after year. But we're doing that because clearly, that's COVID-related. Clearly, we didn't, you know, do a knee-jerk reaction and lay everybody off. We kept everybody employed, and we paid them, and that's what those dollars were meant for, so that you could maintain your operation, you know, in spite of COVID. And everything else on this list, in addition, is COVID-related type expenditures, and we're continuing to look at that. We have other things that we might do, but the second piece of the equation is that we want to address learning loss, and so, there has been a lot of programming set up to help with that, and some other things that we are planning to do with those funds that are not necessarily to help our general fund out, but are to help our children and address our learning losses. And again, all of these things, we're meeting weekly to kind of look at the plan and look at where we are, and we'll pivot where we need to, because, for example, with summer programming, if we don't get the children into the summer programs, we're going to have to shift. We aren't going to just keep everybody employed in summer programming if the kids aren't there. But of course, the first thing we're going to try to do is get, reach out to the children and get them to come so that we can help them address their learning loss, and then after that, we're going to right-size our programming. So, if we do right-size, and we're not spending as much on summer programming, we don't want to leave those dollars on the table, so we'll go back and look again at the general fund and other areas of things we can address with those dollars. The next slide shows you essentially with the ESAR 2 dollars applied to the general fund, where would we end the fiscal year, this current fiscal year? And we would end approximately $6 million under, and that's with the application of that four-point, or I'm sorry, that $10.4 million shift of expenditures out of general fund into ESAR 2. And so, that would actually change our trajectory upward. We would no longer have a declining fund balance for financial condition ratio, but an upward trending one with the ESAR 2. So, now that kind of is last fiscal year, and now I'm going to kind of pivot over to next fiscal year, and just basically with the help of those ESAR dollars, we would end at 10.8%. And that would be if we were to use ESAR for fiscal year '21-'22. And what I've done here is project out to a future year, because my concern with using these ESAR dollars to help our fund balance is that these are one-time dollars. These are not continuing dollars for the long term of our district. And so, if we just didn't use ESAR dollars at all, and we projected out to the next fiscal year, we have a declining fund balance of 2%. So, that's the quick, quick overview of the projections for our financial status.
So, just to summarize, you know, as we look through this, we're very grateful to have these federal funds coming in, because you can see with those unfunded mandates, as well as the declining enrollment, where we would be, and I want us to focus on that. That 2% would require the state to come in and manage Volusia County. And so, that's kind of where we would end up if we didn't have these ESAR dollars. So, we have to capitalize, take advantage, and again, reiterate what Ms. Haynes said earlier, is that these dollars are not reoccurring dollars, so that there will be a timeline after 2023 where these dollars will cease to exist. So, as we go through it, you know, we certainly are taking every effort forward to increase our enrollment so that we can bring our students back. That, to me, is key. We're looking at the areas where they're leaving and trying to get them here, but we have those competing agendas, and so, that family empowerment grant is just really hurting, and I want to point out those numbers again so that you understand. You know, we were at $3 million, and then they went up to $6 million, and we're being told to project even higher and doubling that, because those opportunities are being given to families at $12 million. The FRS increase is something that this county cannot control. It is what it is, and so, we're going to have to pay that. So, the best way we can start to get our funding back in play is to get our families back to us. There's no question about that. But as a district, I shared with you that we are going through that position review process. We're making sure that when positions become vacant, they're necessary. We're doing all those things fiscally responsible to move us in the right direction. Ms. Cuthbert, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Fritz. Thank you, Mrs. Sneed. Open up questions for Ms. Sneed from the board. Ms. Haynes?
So, Ms. Sneed, this is kind of a joint question that may not be able to be answered by you. It may take someone on Dr. Fritz's staff, but when we're looking at that empowerment scholarship, and we're looking at the fact that it's going to go up to $12 million as a possibility, my questions are, you know, when we're looking at it, who qualifies? How do they qualify? And then, you know, do we already, I'm sure, have the data of the number of students, say, by level, you know, that have already taken advantage of it? But ultimately, the biggest question is, what are we going to do? And like I said, this isn't necessarily directed towards you, but what are we going to do differently to keep our students enrolled with Volusia County schools versus losing them to this scholarship? And I'm going to go on record, you know, I've said this all along. We have to tell the positive story of what's happening in Volusia County. We need to highlight all of the wonderful things that are here, the wonderful teachers and staff, you know, even our schoolway cafe and the fact that they've fed our children and things like that. Yes, there are issues that arise at times, and when an issue arises, we need to be problem solvers to come up with a solution, but continuing to negatively spread only negative with no solution and never highlight, I mean, just this weekend, this past week, we had 10 high schools graduate. We had larger numbers at some of them than what we've ever had. That's a positive thing, but I feel like we're losing some of these kids because of the negativity that has come up on social media, and I, we need to figure out how we're going to turn it around, because when we lose the students, we not only lose the revenue towards the scholarships, we lose the revenue that's no longer coming into Volusia County. And at some point, you know, we've done a great job keeping everybody employed, but at some point, you can't keep everyone employed when you lose 2,000 or 3,000 students. So, Dr. Fritz, where are we at, and what can, what do you feel we can do differently? Because $12 million in empowerment scholarships is a lot of money, and a lot of students, because it's costing us even more than $12 million.
I can tell you, I think we've done a really good job of increasing the good news that's out there with our story, on social media in particular. I see lots, better presence of the good things that are occurring, but it doesn't, it's not a one-and-done. You know, when McDonald's came out with Big Mac, there were commercials everywhere, and so, I think there are things that we can do continuously to improve that. I will share with you on this. When we look at the family empowerment, where we are losing our kids is not once they get to us, it's before they get to us, in kindergarten. I think the best way to do that, it's something that I believe is right anyway, whether we were losing kids or not, is to expand our VPK options to our families. I think when they have a wonderful experience as a four-year-old in a family in a VPK opportunity, they're more than happy and willing to give us a shot in kindergarten. I think some of our families that are choosing that option are doing so because of things that they've heard, or things that they feared, or that they have a misguided belief that a private education is going to be better than a public education. So, I think that's important. One of the things that we're doing is we go into the fall, like we've done with our high school showcase, for example, grades for the eighth graders, as they come and get to choose and have a choice option to see what we're doing. On the east and the west, we will be having a K-8 choice fair for our families. We will send out invitations not only to our families here, but we will send invitations out to families that choose other options, such as charter and private, to learn about our schools and what options each of them have. It'll be set up very similar to the showcase. The other thing that we're trying to do is when we can say yes to our families, we try to say yes. We're trying to work with variances. We're trying to move dates. We're trying to make sure that bureaucracy is not getting in the way of doing what's right for our kids. So, all of this, you know, it's really not a one-and-done answer, but it's a combination of everything that we're trying to do to inform our families. Ms. Haynes, you had a wonderful idea yesterday, and these are the kind of things we need to capitalize, taking our valedictorians and doing like a PSA, not thing that we have to pay for with media outlets, but to do our own folks and be able to talk about their journey through our school system. So, our students, the land valedictorian, for example, went to Blue Lake, and so, giving them a couple minutes online and asking them to share their story as a student. And so, those are the type of activities that we need to continually work for. Again, I think our team has done a good job. We have a digital footprint where we didn't before, and that will help tell the story. And as you know, with our younger families, that social media is really how they get their information. It's not really TV and radio anymore. So, I think we are doing that. But again, I go back to what's right anyway is a VPK education for our families. And so, as we start to look at that, if the world was up to me and I had endless money, I would have a VPK in every single elementary school, because I think that's a direct feed into our schools.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Any other comments before I chime in? Yes, Mr. Persis?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to piggyback there on what Ms. Haynes said and what Dr. Fritz said. Capturing our customers early is truly the key, and I think one of the best ways we might be able to do that is the testimonials from, let's say, parents right now who just finished kindergarten. And if you had testimonials from those parents saying just, you know, what an amazing kindergarten teacher their child had, and, you know, what a great school it was, and all those kinds of things, whether it's VPK or in kindergarten, you know, having somebody else say how much they like Volusia County schools is better than us saying how much we like Volusia County schools. You got to have customers touting your product, and people believe them a lot more than they would believe us, because we're getting paid by the system. So, testimonials are powerful, whether it's a parent that just So testimonials are powerful, whether it's a parent that just had a graduating senior and just, just commenting about maybe the IB program or Cambridge or just Deltona High School, just because they just had such a great experience with their children there. Those kind of things that we have, and we have so many, so many people who are absolutely pleased and thrilled with their teachers and with their schools. If we can just get those, just on a, rolling them out just all the time on our website or social media, I mean, that's really influential when you're sitting there thinking, you know, you know, it sounds to me like, you know, this is a great, a great place to be. Why, why would I go anywhere else, you know? So I think I'm, I'm, I'm very proud of our, of our product, but I think we got to look at a different way perhaps to market it, just like Halifax Health does and just like Advent Health does. You know, the best thing that they can do is get a patient that loved their doctor or loved that hospital and they come back and say, oh, lady, you know, and they put that on the billboard or, or something, you know, I wouldn't go anywhere else, but Halifax Health or Advent Health. I mean, those are, those are powerful, powerful words. It works. So I, I think we need to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Persis. Mr. Cologne?
A while back, we talked about having an analysis of our empowerment scholarship and what were the reasons why our students were taking advantage of these. Do we have that information? Did we ever gather that? If not, I think that would be important. I know my area in particular, there is one school who seems to draw a lot of empowerment scholarships. My kids haven't gone there. I can tell you, there's nothing really great there. You know, they don't have academies or anything like that. So, you know, again, if we don't understand where we're bleeding from, you can't just put, you know, a Band-Aid in one spot, not realizing that you're hemorrhaging from somewhere else. And then the other part that I think the empowerment scholarship has done as well is, you know, a lot of times when it comes to bullying, you know, bullying is defined a certain way. The empowerment scholar, thank you, the empowerment scholarship defines it as another way. And so, you know, how, how do we mitigate that loss? You know, is it really, you know, is it really bullying? You know, how, how does it, how does it, you know, translate? What, what can we do to address the bullies? You know, I mean, it's unfortunate and I realize that in a lot, in some cases, you know, there is a code of conduct and there is consequences and, and, and all of that. But when you have a bully who continues to harass a child and the child's option is to move to another school or another class, you know, I think, and I, and I don't know, I've been meaning to research it to see, you know, maybe school districts that have gotten tougher on bullying and, and the consequences have gotten tougher. Because ultimately, that's what would drive a family, aside from what you discussed already, Dr. Fritz, the ones who've never stepped foot in our schools and, and, and decide to take advantage of that scholarship. But, you know, if, if we took a hard line against bullying, then, you know, that student would arguably know, you know, I mean, I'm sure there's a district that got it right somewhere, to know that there's going to be a consequence and that the consequence is going to be theirs. So, you know, again, I mean, I, I know I just threw out a lot of different things, but these are all of the things that play into why our customers are...
I'll remind the board that I've instructed Ms. Rowland to put together a bullying task force to write in to our policies that we are protecting the victim. And as we go forward, that'll include parents, teachers, students, and principals. And we will be working on that this summer to revise that bullying task force and that approach. I will share with you that there is a venue for families that have, feel that they, their child's been victimized, and that's the Hope Scholarship. We have had four. Four. So it doesn't mean that, that that's okay. Four, four. It doesn't mean that that's all the people that have made that choice because of the family empowered scholarship. They may not have listed that, they may not have gone through the reasons, but that's how many have used that as a vehicle to leave. And forced too many. I, I don't like it, but it's, but it's, I believe bullying happens. I believe it's something we have to look at. I think it's something that we have to revise our current practices so that we are protecting the victims. But, but I want to be in transparency, it's not the thousand kids that are leaving that are leaving because of bullying. I think the majority of the reasons parents leave is because there's a belief out there that a private school education is superior to public school. And I think all of us that have served in this understand how good public schools are. And when we went to 10 graduations and we got to hear the accomplishments of our kids, we know how good our teachers and principals are doing at the school sites. But, but again, it goes back to the first thing that you've raised about that perception and about that testimonial. And I think that we are doing, and, and Ms. Schultz is listening online, so she's heard us say that conversation. I think you'll see some work coming forward on that. And hopefully, when we start to turn the tide. Because I, I don't know that parents ask the right questions when they choose something other than us. I think what they're, they're choosing is what, a belief that they think that a private school will, will provide a safer, higher quality education to their children, so.
Okay. Ms. Burnett?
Yes, please. Thank you for bearing with me for a few minutes there. So I, I agree with what everybody has said so far, and we, we do have to get out and market our brand. And I know this is kind of getting a little maybe far away from here, but, but I also think that, you know, listening to, to our parents, listening to the employees goes a long way. And we're never going to agree 100% all the time, but I think when, when we sit down and actually listen and have a conversation with them, people understand and they accept that. And people know that you're never going to agree 100% of the time, but that goes a long way with helping build positive relationships and creating a better product for us. And, and, and I think that we need to help, you know, encourage our employees to also be out there and spinning the positives and not just the negatives or, you know, we don't, every day, we don't, you know, it's work. They call it work for a reason. But you should enjoy your job. And if you don't enjoy your job, then something needs to be evaluated. And so in saying that, people who are enjoying their jobs should be helping spread the good news with, with our product. And that's, that's how I think that we can help with that as well. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you, Ms. Burnett. If, if you would look at slide 14 and 15, I can address what Ms. Sneed has been saying and also what we've been saying at the dais. If you look at the, each blue column at the very top, look at the money we invest in our faculties and staff. We know where the true value of education is. And it's, it's that delivery. And we are investing in development and, and we're very conscious of the fact that Volusia County Schools is the largest employer in the county. We didn't want to lose anyone because we value them. And when we were closed from March, April, and May of last year, it was very important for us to keep those excellent service people, and they are all servicing. We're servicing our students and our communities to keep them employed and very, and not to let them squander. I mean, the people that, who did not have to apply for unemployment was just remarkable. And plus, when you look at slide 15 at the top, summer professional development of the 13 million, 4.5 million is for summer professional development. We are reinvesting in what we think is most important. And I, and I think there's a perception, what quite a few of you have said, there's a misconception that private or charter is much more of an improved educational experience rather than a public school. Some of it is politically placed, some of it's just a misunderstanding. I'm sure all of us here can understand the number of phone calls we've received. Please help me, I'm not getting services, ESE services, for example, maybe speech therapy. And I'll say, what school? And it's a private school and I, I can't help you. But you will have to talk to that school's principal. And if the principal's not giving you the services, your only recourse is to contact the federal government or sue. So we are much, we are very limited to help you. We can assist and help anyone in our public schools. Even charter schools have their own school boards, which we have no jurisdiction. So I, I encourage all parents that when you unenroll or disenroll or leave our school system, that a lot of people assume the same quality of education will be transferred. First of all, our facilities are top-notch. We are held under state and federal regulations. It's now costing, when I came, it was cost about $19 million to build an elementary school. The one in, our new beachside elementary is costing us 24 million, correct? 24 million, Mr. Groob?
As to budget, do you estimate, as we, as I reported a while back, is coming a little bit higher?
Yes, because of, you know, materials and labor costs. If you ask, several years ago, I asked a charter school applicant how much their K through, five would cost, and he said five million. So the, the protection, the standards that we build our schools will protect our students. I, I remember what Mr. Cologne said about school climate. We have to, yes, make a full effort on, on increasing that. And I do believe that Mr., or Dr. Fritz is addressing especially the middle school. But all kids are going to be kids. And being kids is saying, well, I can be better than you. So we always have to be mindful, but we have to be ever presently, present in the moment to diffuse that. And not to yell or scream, but to diffuse it, much like we're asking our police force and our custodians, our, our security force on our, our campuses to de-escalate our students. Plus the opportunities and the activities. And that is one reason why we highlight schools during our meetings. We want everyone to see, look at the opportunities, the activities that we have for our students, especially now with the Lowman's gift from our last board meeting at the end of May, that our fifth grade and eighth grade students, all of them will be able to go to the Museum of Arts and Sciences for that field study of science. So thank you again, Mr. Persis. We also give our, our parents many options. They can apply for a variance, which is costly to us, but they can apply for a variance to go to the school or to the academy that they want. I have a family member who goes to New Smyrna, which is out of their jurisdiction because of the medical academy. We have a strong CTE program that students can kind of test the waters for their career choices. We have ROTC programs on our campuses, not all, but most, that they can experience the military if they so choose. Our internships that we're trying to build, so, and our job is that the CB, CBE students, yes, they can go out and have internships or a work program. Also, the textbooks that we have our students use and our faculty use, we, the students don't have to pay for them, it's free. We pay, we just pay, what, $5.7 billion for ESE, for ELA textbooks, brand new, but they're all state monitored. So that we're, we're, we just are not going to put Social Studies textbook in the hands of a seventh grader, which says that all the American, Native American Indians were justified in being eliminated because they were not Christian. Also, our faculty are somewhat protected because in charter and element and also private schools, they can be fired on the spot. There is no union, there's no protection of their rights, it's whatever administration says. And also in charter schools, there is no supplement paid for outside duties. We have to realize that our students are going to be in a lot of different places. We accept everyone when they come to our, our campus door, whether they have a physical, mental, social, emotional impairment. We have Avid programs. We address their, who was it that talked about IB, Cambridge, and honors programs? But we also offer our, our CBD students, we take care of our self-contained students, we take care of students who have been mainstreamed, and they all have their IEPs, which is their individual education plans and their 504 plans. I'm a firm believer in Avid, and I'm delighted that it's now going to, back to the middle school. Right, Ms. Core? Because I was in her office quite a few years ago, and we had to take Avid away from the middle school, and there she was sitting in her Avid T-shirt, and she said, you're doing what? And so it's, I, I thought of her, I got goosebumps on my left side. I'm so glad we're able now to go back and provide those middle school students that Avid program. We provide transparency. You may not find that transparency at a middle, at a private school or at a charter school. Everybody's salary is posted, everyone knows what we're doing. We have to identify seven days in advance per state regulations to announce that we're having a meeting. We meet in the sunshine, and that's what we're doing right now. We, we may have a, a smaller, people may want to have a smaller setting, which I understand, smaller classrooms, they have more individuality. But sometimes, that's not exactly what's happening. I encourage, if parents decide to go to a private or charter school, you keep track of what is happening in your child's classroom. We can do that here. You can keep track of a child, what's happening in that child's experience, how much that child is being funded and how much of those rights that he is entitled to is, is being taken care of. We have to always make sure that we are aware of who our competitors are. That's the American way. But I highly encourage that if anyone decides to go elsewhere, that they compare apples to apples. But in a lot of times, the, the, there's, we may be the apple, but the charter school may be the orange, and the private school may be the pear, because there's, there is not as much comparison. I think your, your budget that you gave to us, though it was quite an overview, specifies where our money is going and what the threats and the concerns that are coming towards us, which gives us a lot to think about. And that's why we are having this work session, and that's why Mrs. Sneed has been before us, to get it out there for us to mull over, to then present different ideas, how to overcome this. So we welcome everyone's input. That's what school board members do. We are advocating for what's best for students while also at the same time trying to keep a, our, our school system solvent. That is what our number one task is, is to keep our school system solvent. And not just for this year, but for five years from now, which is why we have a five-year capital plan, but it's also for 10, 20 years from now. Because not only do our parents depend on us, but our employees depend on us as well. Because if the school system would start to lay off, that's going to have a huge impact on Volusia County itself, with our 16 municipalities as well as those in the county. Ms. Sneed, if there's no other suggestions or comments, I think Dr. Fritz will. Thank you very much.
We do have the capital budget we'd like to go over with you as well. We have Mr. Groob here for that, if you're able to move up forward.
That's, that's great. Thank you. Mrs. Sneed, thank you very much for your expertise.
Thank you.
And Mr. Groob, if you just want to come up to the table so that you can help with technical questions?
This is 2.02, is that correct? 2.202, our fiscal year 21, '22 tentative capital budget.
Okay, so today, we're just going to go quickly through the capital plan. The first slide shows you on the $80 million bond issuance that we're doing, where those dollars are going. And this was part of the, the current capital plan, so this is not anything that's new. So you can see Woodward Elementary, Tomoka, Stark, and Orange City Elementary. The second chart just gives you some idea of the, the sales tax referendum when it was done. We were projecting that we would get 144 million in revenue, and actually, to date, we've got, we have received 189 million. So that's trending very positively. In the current fiscal year, we're projecting that we will end the year at 47 million in revenue. The next charts are just basically kind of the waterfall chart, and this is just listing the various projects that are, that are in the five-year capital plan. For the most part, what you're seeing here is just a shift of, you know, moving, now we've gotten past last year, and now we're moving everything to the left to the new proposed budget. And it's coded by funding source, so you can see at the top of the, the screen where the different funding sources are for these capital programs. I'm just going to quickly go through that and, and kind of get to what's kind of changed and what we have in the plan that's new for the, for the future horizon. And I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Groob to kind of talk to you about that.
Thank you. Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Fritz, good morning.
Uh, Madam Chair, Board Members, Dr. Fritz, good morning. Uh, Lisa, would you go back to the waterfall slide, I think it's page, uh, five? Uh, you should be familiar with this, uh, as it was presented and approved last year. Ms. Burnett, this may be relatively new to you. But thi, this waterfall, uh, cascading plan kind of shows the out-years, the current year, and the out-years of forecasted funding, and what projects are gonna be accomplished, and, and what phases they'll be in during those years. Uh, we're currently in twenty-one, twenty-two. And as Lisa said, you can see the various colors there. The, uh, the yellow being sales tax, the, uh, tan color is cops, uh, LCIF is in green, and, uh, uh, impact fees are in the, uh, the pale blue color there. Uh, what we wanted to discuss in more detail is a particular project that's on here that's coming up soon for planning. And, uh, that, that project is the Spruce Creek High School, uh, project. Right now, it's calling for a classroom addition and remodeling. Uh, we're entering into the, uh, planning phase for that, where we would typically be going into planning and hiring, uh, consultants for design. The first phase of that is projected to be a classroom addition to replace about over forty portables on that campus. The second phase shows five million dollars, uh, would, is, would be a remodeling project. Right now, we would be looking at the auditorium and the associated music and theater spaces there. Uh, we, we want to open up a little deeper conversation on this project because it's been, uh, we've been digging into it, uh, from a staff standpoint, and, uh, we've also been revisiting the condition assessment that was done on this school three years ago. And I did distribute that, uh, to all of you last week, along with the master plan studies that were done by BRPH, this is back in two thousand nineteen. Uh, we wanna make sure that we are approaching this project, uh, smartly, and looking at the long-term needs of that school, and, uh, bringing to your discussion whether we should be entering into a master plan project at Spruce Creek High School. Because it doesn't, this really, uh, does address a, a few needs of the school, but does not nearly address, uh, all of the issues that, that are out there. And there were, of course, three years ago, there were major discrepancies determined there in terms of, of accessibility, ADA, course spaces being undersized, uh, and a, a number of issues that certainly haven't gotten any better in the last three years. Uh, the patient is, is, uh, has not improved. And, uh, we've done some recent surveys out there, walking the school, and taking a look at safety and security and a number of, of issues out there that, uh, in order to do this properly, uh, we would not want to disinvest money upfront too early if we're gonna master plan this project and do something down the road that's gonna be more of a permanent campus-wide solution. Uh, the way it looks now, we would be entering into planning for some things that maybe, uh, would limit our capabilities to do certain things down the road. It certainly does need that classroom addition. If we do it now, then that building would have to remain on campus, and we would be working around it down the road. So on that line, you see a two million dollar kind of an outlier out there, too, that's kind of says, "Well, we're not done yet, uh, on this campus." Uh, should we be investing a little bit more upfront in, in the planning phase of this, doing a more comprehensive master plan? Maybe even pushing it out a little bit in order to get the proper funding down the road, if, if you would be interested in bonding additional money in the future? Because the estimates on doing a campus-wide solution here, uh, three years ago, were ve, varied between seventy-five and a hundred and two million dollars, depending on how much we wanna do, and how we wanna approach it. Um, so I just wanted to bring this to everybody's attention. Now's the time to have the discussion, to plan this properly, and to make sure that we've, uh, set aside the right amount of dollars and assets in order to do a, to make the proper solution at, at Spruce Creek.
Any other?
Kind of sums it up a little.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Persis?
Well, uh, in regard to just Spruce Creek High School, uh, I'm, I am all in on replacing the school. So I, I wouldn't want us to see, uh, a Deland High School scenario, let's say, where it took us a decade, I think, to actually, from the time we started to the time we finished, if we're ever finished, we may not be finished with Deland High School, I'm, I'm not sure. I'm being a little facetious here. But when you build a school at the same location where you're having school, it, it, it always takes longer, and rightfully so. Cause, so, uh, but, um, I, I think that we can't delay this thing any longer. It's, it's, cause we're starting to throw money into it that we may not be able to recoup later, and I think that would be wasteful. Uh, I remember when Spruce Creek opened in seventy-five, and, uh, it was ahead of its time. Look at that, you know? AC, I mean, that was one of our first high schools with AC. Totally AC, it was like, are you kidding? Everybody wa, wants to go there. No windows, efficient, AC, you know? And of course, now it looks ridiculous. But, uh, in seventy-five, it was state-of-the-art. Um, so seventy-five was a long time ago, you know? Forty-six years ago? So yeah, it's, uh, certainly, I think, uh, served its purpose. It's a amazing high school, as we all know. But it's, it's time, it's time for a new school.
Thank you, Mr. Persis. Anyone else comment? Yes, Ms. Haynes?
Mr. Persis, I don't disagree with you, but, um, when we go back and we look at that first slide where we're, um, part of it's talking about the eighty million dollar bond, which, you know, we came in at the best interest rate we've ever known. Here's, here's my thing. So there's Tomoka, and we're doing the master plan on it, and it's at twenty-eight instead of twenty-four, you know, which, we understand we're tonos, y'all may go up because of the cost of supplies and everything. My question here, though, is, and I meant to bring my history book with me today, and I walked out and forgot it this morning. But when we look at the other schools that are listed here, and there is still one that is not listed here, that, you know, everybody keeps saying, "Yeah, Ms. Haynes," but it's on the list, which is McGuinness, okay? But when we look at the age of Woodward, when we look at the age of Stark, when we look at the age of Orange City, and Orange City, those have kind of been piecemealed, they're, you know, kind of like Deland High was. And we look at McGuinness, I can tell you right now, if you go into a kindergarten classroom at Stark, there's not a single classroom at Spruce Creek High, which I'm not against. You know, cause I don't, I'm really not a piecemeal kind of person, okay? Cause it just does not pay off in the end. But there's not a single classroom at Spruce Creek High that is in the condition of a kindergarten classroom at Stark. And I know some, most of us weren't on the board when, you know, the whole thing was supposed to be, the Stark kids were supposed to be rezoned and fed into the other Deland schools. And then there was, there was some stuff that went on where we kept it, but we had allowed it to deteriorate, and we've only band-aided it. So I just, let me start with Woodward, cause when you went out af, Mr. Groob, after you got here, you did an analysis of these schools. And if I remember right, Woodward came out with one of the highest scores of being in poor condition, which, like I said, when I look at McGuinness, I see McGuinness as being in worse condition, and I see Stark being in worse condition than Woodward. But, you know, that's what it came out, when you guys ran it and looked at all the different factors. So my thing is, we're piecemealing Woodward. I mean, we're gonna spend almost twenty-one million dollars just to do some renovations and additions, so we're piecemealing it. We're not really addressing the problem where with just a few million more, we could give them a new state-of-the-art school, cause they're old. It's, it's much older than Spruce Creek, it's much older. I mean, but Stark and McGuinness are older than either one of them. I mean, these schools listed here, Mr. Persis, whether or not, are older than Tomoka. You know, and I'm, but I'm all for Tomo, like, cause Tomoka was built with that weird design, we all know, you know, which was the, the design at that time. Um, so I'm just struggling here today. Because yes, I know Spruce Creek is coming up on the fifty-year mark, and we have to get to the fifty-year mark before we can do. But we're piecemealing, I, I just don't believe in piecemealing. I don't believe in band-aging when we've allowed stuff to maybe not be kept up to code or whatever, because we're just throwing money. Because then, you know, the next step is we're gonna come back around to Woodward and go, "Okay, now we gotta put another twelve million into Woodward." Well, with the twenty-one and twelve, we could've had the new school. So I still have the mindset of what I spoke about earlier on. We need to think smart. We need to look at our zoning, we need to look at where our kids are at, the growth that's happening. And we need to build schools that meet the needs of our children at this time. And I'm not against Spruce Creek in any way like this, but I'm just saying, we, we've gotta sit down and take a smarter look at this. Uh, I, I mean, cause seriously, I would encourage any of you that have never been to Stark to go and look at, and go into the classrooms of the original buildings that are at Stark. And I think you would feel the same way I feel. That we're saying it's okay just to throw a little bit of money there and do some renovations, but that those children don't deserve a better classroom.
Ms. Haynes, are you, um, asking for a completely new school at Stark? Is that what you're asking?
I'm at, well, I'll tell you right now, since Woodward came back on the, you know, having the most issues on the thing that Mr. Groob did, it was the largest concern. I'm asking that we reevaluate, yes, I am. Uh, cause go there, I mean, if you haven't gone into, they're, they're dark. They're, they're dark little old rooms. I mean, it, it's heartbreaking. Or, you know, or my thought is, let's sit down and have that tough conversation about, is it time to rezone Deland? Okay, and give every child the best opportunity, and build the, build the new school on the Woodward campus or something, on that piece of property, and rezone our kids so every child has an opportunity to be in a, in a better situation than where they're at right now.
Okay, this, what Mr. Groob has presented on slide three is the eighty million, um, bond. Okay, if, if we increase Stark, something would have to be taken away from something else. Either that, or it'd have to be postponed. So, and I see in the capital budget, there's a Career Center, again, that's come back.
The Career Center is, is still a placeholder, yes ma'am.
It's still a placeholder, is that the one Dr. Fritz presented last year?
Yeah, the Career Center is gone. Um, it's, it's not something that we're proceeding with. We're working on some other things with the Tona State instead.
Okay, um, is that money, could that money be reapportioned to Stark?
Or, like I said.
Well, I, I don't wanna specify which school.
Okay.
Um, and I'll say this about, um, the high schools. Uh, there are more programmatic requirements for high school. We just went to graduation, we heard how many merit scholarships that were coming across the state. So as we start to refine programs, those classrooms look differently. They're not nice little neat boxes. And so as we start to look at our, our needs at Spruce Creek, um, those are some of the areas that we're looking at. We're also looking at where safety and security concerns traditionally happen. Uh, Spruce Creek is, is one of concern, uh, without going into specific details. Uh, it's not saying that the elementaries aren't important. If that's an area the board wants us to go back and reevaluate, I will remind you that we, you know, Terry T. on the books right now as we're doing that. We have Tomoka coming up, we, there are those that are there. It doesn't mean that we don't. One of the things that we're challenged with, and I'm not suggesting we do anything about it, but we have way more buildings than we actually qualify for student count. We have forty-four elementary schools. We have elementary schools with less than three hundred kids in them. Um, you know, that's where it really gets tough, because if you start talking about how you pull funds and you build one school, it's just very similar to what we went through with Osceola or Tona, when we took two schools and we brought them together to make a right-size elementary school. And so, uh, you know, we can do this, but it has to be the priority of the board on where we go. Um, when you're talking schools that have very small populations and renovating one, that's a, that's actually more of an expense because of our student count. So, uh, we are all ears, uh, we do take these recommendations from the Oversight Committee and where we go, um, any recommendation from the board, I would recommend strongly because they are part of that, that we go back to them and express your concerns and, and come back to this board with some recommendations.
Okay, I think what might help us figure that out, Mr. Groob, if you could give us, um, you know, like, what is being done in, in the renovations? There are three renovations, um, Orange City, Stark, and Woodward. You know, just exactly what will you be renovating? Like, you, you did that for New Smyrna Beach Middle School. Um, exactly what was being renovated, where the money was being, um, directed? That might help us, um, a lot in understanding, um, any of this. And what, what people don't know, cause we only know our own counties, we're one of the very few counties in the state that still have elementaries under four hundred students. And, I mean, it's, it's remarkable. I mean, I know one that is sitting close to two hundred. But because of where it's placed, it needs to address a larger, larger area. But as our, some of our, especially beachside, as some of our homes are escalating so high in price, still families are, if they can afford it, can move there, but they still need a local elementary school, which is what we're still trying to address. But I do agree, to close any of our elementaries is heartbreaking. We had to have that discussion with Reeve Vitello, uh, almost three years ago. Uh, we've had that discussion recently with, um, Osceola and Ortona. They're heartbreaking, absolutely heartbreaking decisions. But as, if we don't increase our FTE, um, it's all, it's all gonna hit us, and we're gonna have to make some very, very tough decisions. So I think what would help us in transparency is to identify, just very briefly, are you doing a media center? Are you doing the kindergarten classrooms? Are you doing the ceilings so that they're brighter? So I, I think it's extremely important, we know exactly what you're gonna be doing for them. And, uh, I don't see anything about McGuinness on here.
It's in the waterfall.
It's in the waterfall? McGuinness? I didn't see it. Oh, page five, okay. See, Terry T., Woodward, Tomoka, Stark Elementary.
It's right, right above.
Oh, I see it, I got it, great, thank you. And would you include that one as well? What renovations you might be having for that one?
And, you brought up a good point, Ms. Cuthbert, about the numbers, you know, the student numbers. And I think we're gonna have to start looking at that. Because it goes back to the earlier budget. If we're gonna lose students to, with twelve million dollars' worth of possibly empowerment scholarships, and we're down two thousand students even right now, at what point can we be financially responsible and feasible giving students a high-quality, you know, classroom, uh, you know, to, to work in? But at the same time saying, "We're not gonna be able to, to run a school that is under four hundred or under three hundred." And yes, you have to look at the area, cause like McGuinness is a little unique. They're, like, it's a long way from that area to get to any other school. But, and I know this is hard to say, but when we're looking at Deland, Stark and Woodward only sit how far away from each other? And I love Stark Elementary. But the original plan was they, we were going to rezone, and then we didn't. But what was heartbreaking, as I've always said, is we let that building go.
Mrs. Haynes, would you want to make a suggestion to Mr. Groob and his department to combine the two? Is that feasible?
Well, we are quite a ways along now in the design of Woodward. We've gotten our schematic design package in, and we're, that would be a, a step backwards to do that at this point. Uh, not to say we couldn't take a look at doing more at Woodward, but we would have to resize, uh, there's a lot, there's a lot taken into consideration at this point.
Okay, I, I apologize, I didn't know how far along you were. But I just wanted to bring forth her idea, just because, yes.
I mean, we're busing kids in from Glenwood right now, though, to Stark. In order to have the, the numbers.
I didn't know that, I didn't know that. How many, how many, you think?
I'm, I'm not sure, but we're bussing kids in from Glenwood, and sometimes we're losing some. and sometimes we're losing some of the Glenwood families. And they're choosing other alternatives versus, I mean, I mean, there's, if it truly was servicing just that piece, that's different. But we're bussing kids in even there and we've put specific ESE programs there to bus them in too. Do you see what I'm saying? So, because we made it an ESE site for Multi-VE and things like that. So, that's what I'm saying. If you look back in history, we were going to redistribute, you know? Because we've got a lot of elementary schools in Deland. And then that didn't happen, and I don't want to talk about why it did or did not happen, okay? But I want those children to have the same opportunity as every other child. And when, and I go back to this, when Woodward came out with the worst score, you know, on the rating index thing that they did for being, and the quality that, and shape it was in, why are we putting 21 million dollars just to?
That is crazy.
Add or renovate?
There is, there is something for that, ma'am chair, and that is, Westside Elementary and Woodward Elementary were built, I think, the same year. It's the same school, it's the same design. When we just finished the renovation at Westside. We didn't build a brand-new Westside, we did the renovation. This renovation, if I'm correct, mirrors the renovation that they did at Westside, which came out great, by the way. I mean, if you go to Westside, it looks like a brand-new, new school. I mean, I don't know what part isn't new, but it certainly looks new from the outside, inside. I mean cafeteria, media center, office, classrooms, everything. It looks, it looks great. So, I don't, I don't want to speak for you, but, and I don't know how much the Westside renovation cost because that was a few years ago, but.
Yes, sir, they are very, very similar. They're, they're coming out a little different because, just because of the logistics and the site configuration. But it would include a, a new cafeteria multipurpose building similar to what we're doing, almost identical to, to Westside, and a new classroom addition as well. So we are using the Westside reuse of those plans. And we are going back into the existing building and we're doing a considerable amount of remodeling in there. We're taking off part, we'll be doing the bus loop out front. So, there's quite a bit of work being done there. The, the total price tag, I think the actual total price tag, which includes the design and the FFNE, is that 20 million you were looking at, the actual construction dollars. More mirror, maybe a little bit more because of today's market conditions, but pretty much mirror what was done at Westside. But I wanted to say, you, you make an excellent point in that we don't only, we not only look at the facility's condition index, which we have put together, but we look at, at school capacity. We try to forecast, we're, we're trying to aggressively remove portables on these campuses as well. And where we see portable classrooms out there that, when it's time, if it's been sitting there long enough and that its kind of capacity is kind of stabilized, or not moving very much up or down, that also plays into the decision, it's time to put a permanent classroom addition out there and, and make it a state-of-the-art, excuse me, teaching environment. And that's what we're doing at Spruce Creek, there's 43 portables there. And, and that condition index, by the way, was .67. That came in at the highest of the high schools, just like Woodward Avenue did at the elementary level. This one is considered to be the worst condition, just on the index alone, so.
Most of our high schools, other than Seabreeze and Deland High, are brand-new or newer.
Yeah, Seabreeze is too.
Seabreeze is new.
Well, Atlantic and Pine Ridge are what, 27 years old now?
I mean, they had a review in the 90s.
I mean, there's some original buildings still at Deland because it got piecemealed.
Right, it was. And it was, that was done in 99 to, well, after almost 10 years.
Yeah, I know.
And we don't want to be on a campus for 10 years. We, we overstayed our welcome a long time ago and it's very disruptive to.
I think max is five. You got to get it done in five years.
So, if I may, jump in for just a quick second. At one point when I first got here and we stalled because of the pandemic, we did talk about doing an elementary master plan as far as transportation and things like that. You know, it would require a lot of thought. And projects that are already going, we would not want to stop. It would not be prudent for us. But as we go forward, if the board guides us in that direction, I said earlier that we have 44 schools in elementary and, and that's quite a bit. You know, really, your, your bang for your buck is you don't want an elementary school with less than 500 students to be able to put you in the black. 500 is really the cutoff. So, if that's something the board guides us and directs us, you can think about it, you don't have to answer at this table, but I would encourage you to come back and revisit this before we start getting down the road with too many projects. If that's something the board says to us, I want you to put together a plan to kind of look at some of the older schools and what makes sense for us to come forward. We can, we would be in the same situation though. We just finished with Osceola or Tona, we know it's difficult. But if that's the guidance that you give us, then we can do that. And again, that number, and Dr. Shanoff, if you could, you and Steve could check that again. It was 500 last time I checked, but I want to make sure that's pretty close. So, and we'll come back. And if you want us to, you know, kind of just give you some preliminary information, we can, and then get more guidance. But that's a huge deal. And part of the reason that we, we spend so much money is because of that size, trying to keep small buildings afloat. But, but again, I'm going to throw this out to you. There's culture and you know that.
I know.
And that's a huge thing in our community. And it's really important for some families to be able to say that I've had this school and we've been there forever. We just lived that and experienced that. And look how long it took us. So when you're talking about doing that on a massive scale, you know, we just need to consider that. But we'll wait for your guidance moving forward. In the meantime, I'm going to ask Dr. Shanoff and Steve to get us that number, so at least we have that piece.
And I, I need to say one more thing about Spruce Creek High School. As an IB school, as well as an honors, it has no Cambridge, it has no, it has AP, Advanced Placement, but no Cambridge, is there, it serves the entire east side. There are five high schools, so it's one high school serving four other high schools. We put in Cambridge in order to help ease the overcapacity at Spruce Creek High School. So, we have a, a high school, Seabreeze High School, that is far to the north. And those students now, if they want a more challenging curriculum, they get to stay in their home school and not travel all the way to Port Orange. So, that has eased somewhat at Spruce Creek High School. But however, as an IB school, there's a certain quality of education that the parents and the students expect from that facility. And as we always see, when we have the Tamoka Regional Science Fair, when we have the Olympiads, when we have the Envirothons, the State Olympiads, all of the, every single time, Spruce Creek High School is coming in. And with, and there are 40, I believe there are 45 portables out there. They've been there forever. You can't see them from the street, most people don't know they're there. But that, those portables, if they're all filled, that is one-third of the student population at any time are in those portables. And that is not safe for them. They're not accessible to the main office, safety and security as well, especially in a hurricane, bad weather, it is not good. The, the walkways are not covered. And they're not covered because we didn't want to put the expense and all that overhang, like at Creekside, you have all that overhang, above you. Because it's very expensive and we were hoping to put in a classroom building for a long time. That classroom building, that is 10 million, hopefully it's only 10 million. I don't, are we doing two stories or three?
Two stories.
Two stories, but it needs, it needs it desperately. In fact, when Dr. Balgobin was the first superintendent, I took her, it was my first school for her to visit. And I do know that Dr. Shanoff visited Spruce Creek High School recently. And it has, and even one of the hallways is called the Crooked Hallway. So they do need, and they have, yes, it's, it's quite interesting. But their expansive STEM program, their robotics program, their finance program, I mean, they have a bank inside off the commons. We just renovated their gym because there was a leak in the roof. But we never meet as a district at Spruce Creek High School. And they're so well centrally located. Why? Because Mainland High School has a better auditorium and so does Deland. When I walked into Seabreeze's auditorium, when Lord Chamberlain, the Lord came. I don't, what was his name, Lord something or other? He was a grandson of Winston Churchill. He gave the word to the Seabreeze Band that they were going to march in the London Parade, New Year's Parade. I looked at that auditorium, I went, my mouth dropped because I had been in there before. The difference between the Spruce Creek High School auditorium and that Seabreeze auditorium is like night and day. They, Spruce Creek has one of the best arts theater programs. Those kids go off all over the country. The valedictorian and salutatorian at Spruce Creek High School, one's going to Princeton, one's going to Stanford. They produce and they deserve a top-notch facility in order to enhance that. Both of our IB schools deserve that. Deland has it, still getting it, but Spruce Creek doesn't have it at all.
And that second phase that we show there is to address that issue?
Yes, and I have been, this has been part of my bandwagon since I was elected. Let's not forget Spruce Creek High School, that contributes so much. Yes, Mr. Cologne, sorry.
So, can we go back to the slide with the elementary schools? There we go. So, Woodward has about 600 students. We're going to renovate Woodward for 20 million dollars, yet we could arguably replace it for 26. Orange City, Orange City's enrollment, and I'm just looking up real quick again, for another 7 million, we could replace that school. Now, I know there's probably a historic component there, so.
The front office.
The front office. And so again, you know, it, it's kind of like what happens with Enterprise, you know? It's the sweet little neighborhood school, but the reality is that, you know, and you all have recently evaluated Enterprise, it also needs replaced, so.
It's been piecemeal for many, many years.
And so, I, I can't imagine why we would drop 20 million into a school and not replace it. I, I mean, that's, that is, I, I, maybe I'm crazy. Same thing with Orange City Elementary. So, the enrollment in Orange City Elementary, that school's going to actually grow. So, let's see how many students we have there. Just looking really quick here. So, Orange City has about 590. Then you have Stark, who's got about 400 kids, and we're going to put 14 million dollars into that. So, you know, going back to, you know, yes, there's a lot of emotion, yes, there's a lot of culture, yes, there's a lot of that, but, you know, we're a business. And that, and I know.
Give us the order.
You know, we're, we're a business and, and the reality is that, you know, either we give Stark a new school and, and figure out how to jump that enrollment up, or, you know, we've got decisions to make. Because the reality is, you know, it's kind of like, and I'm going to go back to the budget presentation. You know, you, we've lost 2,000 students. That's about the campus of Deltona High. Actually, that's more than the campus of Deltona High. How many employees would you say are at that school? Hundred and?
About 200.
About 200 employees. So we've lost that many students and we have not adjusted for that. So, you know, I, I think we do need to look at that as far as Spruce Creek goes. So, go back to the next slide where you had the amounts, the cascade. So, for Spruce Creek, so Spruce Creek is a beast, that's going to be a 100 million dollar school. With this proposed 20 million dollars, would that get rid of all the portables?
It, it would get rid of the portables, that's what the first phase would be.
And would that also renovate the auditorium?
That's what the second piece is, yes, sir.
That's what the second piece is. So, arguably, and, and again, you know, we use, I, I use the same analogy. We could get them out of the portables and get them an auditorium for 20 million dollars rather than 100 million, knowing we've got a lot of other schools that need help, that need serious help along with other decisions we have to make. You know, that, that may be the bang for the buck, given the size of that school and how much that's going to cost. But these other ones that were, you know, 8 million dollars away from a brand-new school, it just seems a little bit off. I may be, maybe my construction math, which I have none, makes no sense whatsoever. But to dump that much into renovations, I don't care how much you renovate an old house, it's still going to be an old house. So, you know, and we're talking about 40 million dollar difference from giving three schools a brand-new school.
Can I, can I just jump in? I just want to let you know that with the, the first slide with the 80 million, that we, we are almost ready to issue those bonds. And they do have restrictions, so to change kind of direction at this point is, would cost us money and time.
So, go back to those other ones?
Yeah. So, we have some flexibility, but I don't know that we have that much flexibility. So if we want to move forward with looking at Spruce Creek and doing more for that in the future, we might want to look at a different.
Well, that's a different source.
See, Spruce Creek High School has bathroom problems. I mean, they don't have proper bathrooms. They don't have, all the science classes don't have a lab. That, there's electricity, you've got 110 connections when there should be 220.
I'm not doubting, like I said, I've been to Spruce Creek once, I've been in their auditorium. I basically walked in and walked out. So, I'm not pretending to, to say what they need or they don't need. I think the urgency has been the portables. But, you know, again, what, what we're going to spend to do, what would arguably, even with this formula, to take care of five schools is what it's going to cost to do the one. And so that's a beast, that's, that's a big one and it needs to be done, but it's, it's a big one. You know, I, for me, the number one thing is to get rid of those portables. You know, and unfortunately, the number for 20 million dollars, it's not like, oh, if we spend, yeah, it's if we spend another 80 million dollars, we could get a brand-new school. We're not talking about 7 million dollars. But anyways, that's just my thought, we're a little bit aways from that, so.
I don't. I'm, I'm a secondary person, I always have been. Be right with you, Mr. Persis, thank you for letting me go before you. High schools are extremely important because that's where the graduations occur, that's where the CTE programs are, that's where they blossom. And that's not to take away the importance of pre-K, because I fought for pre-K, what, five years ago, when it was being led that we were going to eliminate it. It's extremely important, but we cannot compare elementaries to a high school, especially an IB school. So, I'm 100% behind the classrooms and not just renovations, but I don't think it's, we're going to have to weigh, I think, they're not done with the studying of, of Spruce Creek High School. We're going to have to weigh what we can renovate, what can we save, what definitely has to be replaced. But it is, I'm talking security, safety, ADA requirements. Because you go into a bathroom right by the commons area, which is right by the auditorium, and there are two stalls, and that's it. And there's no room, I mean, to put a wheelchair bathroom, that's just one. And there's no room to put a sink. So, the requirements by the state is very different from 1975 to today. And to, we have to service an IB school. Especially when we're touting it. And what, one thing that Dr. Sparker said, again, according to USA Today News, Spruce Creek High School is ranked one of the best high schools in the country. Yes, Mr. Persis, thank you.
Thank you. I think one thing we have to keep in mind is what we're doing with Terry T. Small. Now, Terry T. Small's around, what, 550, it's under 6, I'm, I'm pretty sure. And we made a decision, rather than bus students out to other schools, we said.
12, 12 other schools.
For the neighborhood, let's reinvest in Terry T. Small. And so that gets me back to Stark. It would be, you know, why is it that we're building a new Terry T. Small, but we're not doing the same thing at Stark? You know, why, why would, why would we say, let's just close Stark and bus students to Woodward, which is the closest school? Which was the plan that we tried to do 30 years ago or 25, I think. And we ended up abandoning that, that plan. So, we got to keep that in mind. Some of these things too, where it says like Orange City and Westside, you know, what would really be helpful for the board to know is what is it that isn't going to be renovated? Like at Stark, if 13 million is in there, what, what aren't you going to do? And then just because we're borrowing 80 million for, for this, doesn't mean we couldn't add to it from, from another fund source. I mean, if that's what the board wants to do. So, you know, we have additional revenue coming into us from the half cent. So, you know, we have additional revenue coming into us from the half cent sales tax, even after our debt service. And that's one thing I, I did want you to, you know, be able to share with the board. In addition to that, we haven't even talked much at all about our capital outlay fund, which is robust, by the way, and, and about to get even bigger. Uh, so we have, we have some money on the table, uh, that I think this board needs to know about. Because we had a capital outlay program, you know, last year. It's always five, five years, but it's only good for the current year. And we projected income, but our income has way exceeded our expectations. Uh, exceeded the forecast. So my question is, where's, where's the money? You know, what, where? I know where the money is, but we, where, what, what's the plan to use those dollars?
The allocations.
You know what I'm saying? So like, we projected, uh, capital outlay around fifty million, and it comes in close to sixty million. Well, that's ten million dollars. We could do a lot with ten. Ten, ten, ten million dollars. And, and, and next year, it could be sixty-eight or sixty-five. I mean, uh, so there's, there, there is a constant revenue stream coming in here for our capital projects. And so in, in fact, the board wants to add to this. I think we would have the funds to. I'm not saying that we should. I think it would be based on what Mr. Groob says and, you know, what the school needs. But I am, I hear what Jamie's saying. I hear what, uh, uh, Ruben's saying with Orange City and Stark. I don't wanna shortchange any school. I mean, if, if the school needs another two million dollars to really finish it out, then we need to spend it. I mean, I, I don't, you know, I don't wanna go cheap on any of this because we have the revenue. If we didn't, then we have to make some tough, some, some tough choices, but.
And I also think.
The revenue's there.
Um, and before Ms. Haynes speaks, we also can ask the opinion of the half cent sales tax committee. What do they see? Because they're out, I mean, they represent, um, financial, um, const, our, our, our financial business sector in the county, as well as our building industry. And, and they too send children and have, live in neighborhoods that are surrounding all of these schools. That might be a good idea as, as we move forward. Yes, Ms. Haynes?
Well, and, and Mr. Persis, um, the last two times you spoke, you brought up some good points. The one difference, I will say, between Stark and Charity, but, I mean, they're very similar, all right? For Charity, we bused kids away from the neighborhood because we couldn't hold them. Stark, we're actually busing kids in, um, in order to have the numbers there. Because we're busing them from further away. We're busing them actually from further away than the distance between them and Woodward. Like, 'cause there's really not much distance between where Stark and Woodward are at. But we're busing kids in from Glenwood into Stark, and we're busing our multi-VE kids from all around the land, you know, into Stark. Um, but when, and, and then the difference between Woodward and Westside, because I've been on both campuses a lot over the years. Um, yes, they were built off of a similar plan, just like years ago, the current Blue Lake and the old Osteen, you know, were. Well, what did we do? We knocked the old Osteen down and built a new school. Even though they were both the same plant with a lot of the same flaws, design flaws and issues. But what did we come into doing Blue Lake? We did to it what we did to Deland. We took X number of years and moved teachers, classroom at a time, out to live in portable world, gutted their room, kept the same structure, didn't change some of the flaws, just went, okay, we've given you a new facelift and moved you back in. And it cost us how much time and how much money? I mean, they ripped the roofs off of the buildings, and then the rain came, and then they had to readdress all of that. And so the difference between Woodward and Westside, 'cause I've been in both of them. Westside never appeared to me to be as dark, like when you were in the main building before they built, you know, and renovated. Or as old as when you go into the Woodward hallways. You know, like, 'cause they, both buildings just are similarly laid out. But what, Westside always looked newer even than Woodward. Um, and I think that's why probably Woodward came, 'cause Woodward still has like the gang bathrooms. Because we have elementary schools that, believe it or not, because they're older, don't have bathrooms in their classrooms, or the bathrooms are not working. Like, that was George Marx. You couldn't use the restrooms that were in some of the classrooms because of the age and they weren't working. And that's kind of where Woodward's at. And I do appreciate what you added on to that. But I think we, I think we need to take a long, hard look at what the zoning looks like even from these schools. And if we have kids that are being bused five to ten miles or more away to bring them in, and yet we could read this, I, I mean, I hate to say it, but I mean, like, if we can give kids a brand new state of the art facility and it's still within a mile of where they all live, or a mile and a half, that's much better than busing kids in six and ten miles away, or busing them out.
Yeah.
You know?
I agree. I agree.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Mr. Cologne?
So Atlantic and Pine Ridge are similar in size, correct?
Yes.
Same, same design.
Atlantic has. One less wing.
Atlantic, Pine Ridge has more space than Atlantic.
Okay, 'cause the enrollment at Pine, at Pine Ridge is about seventeen hundred. The enrollment at Atlantic is about twelve hundred. And so I don't know what their capacity is at, but we may, and, and I just throw this out there. I don't know the answer to this. Do we have a zoning problem where we don't have enough kids zoned to go to Atlantic because there's a more desirable school over here? And so we're overflowing this one, yet we've got one that has capacity. I don't know the answer. That'd be a question for Ms. Doster, but, you know.
Kind of like what you and I said about what's happened at University High. University High graduated six hundred and twenty graduates, number one in the district, uh, you know, this week. And yet you only graduated how many from Pine Ridge and Deltona High?
Most of the same combined. So, I mean, again, that's just another question. Because, I mean, Spruce Creek is at tw- twenty-two hundred, twenty-three hundred?
Oh, my gosh, no. They're much higher than that. At least they have been in the past. They were up to like twenty-six hundred there for a while.
Spruce Creek's at a hundred and nineteen percent capacity.
So that tells you we have a zoning problem.
And I remember.
And I don't know if Atlantic has the capacity. That, that's what I'm saying. I don't know, especially since they have one less wing than Pine Ridge. But Pine Ridge is at seventeen hundred. So I've just.
Right, but.
I don't know.
We, we function essentially with our schools as two districts because of the east and the west side. And so you gotta keep that in mind. You can't compare an east side and a west side unless you're willing to transport kids across twenty-three miles.
Well, no, but whole schools are in Port Orange.
The buildings were built in the same timeframe, on the same design. And so he's saying one has more students at it than the other. So he's saying, so do we need to do rezoning on the east side in that area?
'Cause they're in the same city.
Right. That may be, um, a few things have come up that, you know, and I'm gonna, we've shared a lot of good ideas, but we are gonna need some direction. Because this is, um, you know, you guys are bringing up good points, but at some point, whether it's today or in the near future, we're gonna have to narrow down direction from the board, where you want us to go. Um, one of the things that we could do and go back, and this is a contingent on not touching pro- programs, or, or projects that have already started. If we've already started and spent money and put money into it, then I would ask that we look at other proj- projects. If you'd like us to go back and reassess the projects and work with the half cent sales committee to kind of see where we're at, we can. We can certainly look at renovation versus new. I'll share with you on Westside, to Mr. Persis's point, you can't tell that that's not a new school. And so if you renovate a school for seven million dollars less and they do the type of work they did at Westside, and they're able to keep a couple of extra buildings and it's still saving seven million dollars, essentially, it's a new school. There's new parking lots, there's new front, there's new classrooms. So I would ask us to, when we look at renovation versus new, we're looking at what capacity that is. Renovation, to me, um, you know, I think where the board was going is, if you're just changing out a cafeteria and a couple of classrooms and it's seven million dollars, that's one thing. But the renovation at Westside was much more extensive than that. So I think that the committee did their due diligence in trying to save the pennies. Essentially, with Westside, you have a brand new school, but there are certain interior buildings, for example, that may not have been touched. Um, so one of the things that we're gonna have to get from the board is, is direction on, af- on that. Do you want us to only renovate, or do you want us to build new? And I think if we used Westside as an example, maybe Mr. Groob could give us an example of what was left based on that renovation so we could see the difference, and that might be a good example. The final thing that we're gonna need some direction on, and it does go back to the rezoning piece. When we talk about that magic number of what a school needs to be solvent financially. Um, if the board has guidance and direction and you want us to start looking at that, but it will, it will be with some pain that you will have to shoulder, um, in your communities. If we start looking at taking schools like, like Stark and others and combining them like we did with Osseo or Tona. Um, fiscally, it might be a, a very, to Mr. Cologne's point, we are a business. It may make all the sense in the world, but it's not without some pain. So if you want us to present an elementary master plan to you of projects that have not been started, we could certainly start that work. That's not a quick turnaround. Uh, we would need some time, probably six months, to kind of really start looking at that, uh, to come back and tell this board. I'm sure.
Okay. And, and to, to, to talk to, um, Mr. Groob, to help deescalate his frustration. As he comes forward and presents a lot of these to us, and because we've discussed Stark and we've discussed Tamoka, uh, I mean, Tamoka's always been a discussion since I've been on the board for six years. And Woodward, we probably need more.
Keep Tamoka on the list, please.
He's begging.
I know, I know. Maybe we need to ask better questions at the outset, rather than wait till you've already got it started and then present to us and all of a sudden thinks, whoops, wait a minute, wait a minute. So, and, and thank you for your foresight in that, uh, maybe we need, we need as a board to do a better job of asking the, the questions. And so one, one thing would be nice for us to know, especially when it comes to new board members being elected or who might not know as much about what's going on, is a set of questions for us to question. Um, maybe that's something that maybe I can help with. What exactly are you going to renovate? What are you not going to renovate? What is the most severe, um, problem on that campus, just like Spruce Creek High School? Those forty-five portables. That's the most critical in that auditorium. And of course, the auditorium was pushed back because of the leak in the gymnasium. The gymnasium looks gorgeous. Now, it's absolutely beautiful. So, and then like New Smyrna Beach Middle, I mean, it's, it had never been touched. So we, we just need to be able to ask better questions earlier so we don't frustrate your department and you've got the go-ahead and everything is very, very clear. Uh, second of all, I think it's important that we, um, have better eyes in, in history. For example, when I moved here in eighty-six, Deltona Beach, Del- Deltona High School was brand new. They just opened it because of the overcrowding at Deland High School and the growth of the southwestern part of our county. Pine Ridge High School was built because of the overcrowding at Deltona. 'Cause that's when my husband was there, and they were just bursting at the seams of students in Pine Ridge. And then Orange City was built because of the, the push more to the, uh, more southwest part of our county and also the overpopulation of Deltona as well as Pine Ridge. Atlantic was built because there were new, new, um, students in the northern part of Port Orange, as well as the southern part of, um, South Daytona. So it needed, because Spruce Creek High School was built bursting at the seams. And it, Spruce Creek is still bursting at the seams, just like Deland. They still have a large population of our students. So as we move forward, um, I think it's fascinating to see the progression of, of your job, the facilities that you've overseen. Um, and it's nice to have your input, but it's also nice to have somebody on the board, uh, like Ms. Haynes, myself, Mr. Persis, who have been here for a short while. I'm not telling our age, you understand. A short while, in order to have the history of the schools, to help educate those who haven't been here and, and to help clarify a more clear, transparent figure of the growth of our, our cities. We're very fortunate. There are five high schools on the east, five high schools on the west. It does help even things up. There is an IB school on each side. There, I think when the original five schools were proposed to be rebuilt, I think there was one in each school district. There's Pearson, um, then Chisholm, then we did your, your district, uh, George Marx. And we addressed District Five with Deltona Middle and then Tamoka. You know, we, we're gonna do Tamoka and then that's District Four. So I think we're trying to be as fair in our history as possible. It's just things, things are really cooking now. And so with, with the cost and, and our blessed half cent sales tax that we couldn't do it without our taxpayers and the people who visit our, our county, uh, but yes, you're right, we're at a precipice now. I think we do need to relook to see what direction we're going to go in. And I think it probably should be discussed with our individual meetings with you all, just so we can talk to you a little bit better.
We can, we can certainly do that. The thing is, though, we're gonna need all five of you to give us guidance to move forward and rather try to.
When would you like to have that guidance?
Well, I mean, today, I would like to know if there's desire for us to reassess the projects that have not been done. That we have not invested money in, to go back and start looking at that. And, because things that we are on the plan that we've not touched yet, uh, we can certainly go back. I, I, I got a feeling that the need is still going to be what we've already found, because that work has been done. We can certainly go back to that. But then some of those key questions are gonna have to come out. I think it would be really important, for example, to compare, the board needs to see what a school renovation looks like and what a new project, you, you know what a new project looks like. But if Westside, for example, was truly categorized as a renovation, walk it. Because if you can save seven million dollars on a renovation that looks like Wa- Wa- uh, Westside, save seven million dollars. Because it's, it's beautiful. Now, if a renovation is simply a, a minor and it's costing us twenty million dollars and it, if we're not, then, then I think that's a decision point where you say, no, we, we need a new school. And so I, I think that that would be prudent. But, but today, from what we kind of need from you guys, is, is there a desire for at least go back to re, you know, reanalyze where we're at? And then we can come back to you and say, all projects, you know, it's either confirmed, these are the right projects. In the meantime, you, you make an appointment. Mr. Groob is going to have his one-on-ones with you to go over your projects, 'cause we just did Gulf Force Stocktake. And in that time, we could set up a, a quick visit to Westside for you guys to see that maybe those of you who haven't seen the renovation. And then he could show you what the old part of the building really was. Um, and then we could look at, you know, other concerns that you may have. For example, the twenty million dollars versus the twenty-six, if that's not a complete revision like, uh, Westside was, then what does that entail? And then we can come back. And one of the decisions we want to, it does not have to be made today, but understand it's gonna take some time. If you're focusing in, for example, on elementary, is there a desire for a new elementary master plan? And, and that will take some time, uh, I can assure you, 'cause that's not just building, that's transportation, that's, uh, looking at, you know, everything from grants, as Ms. Haynes knows, that will be looking at changing, um, federal status of schools and things like that. But, but that would be something we would have to have. So for, just for today, I just need to know, do you want us to go back and readdress and?
Do, do you need us, Madam Chair, to, um, as far as that bond ish issue, that eighty million?
And we need to go ahead on Spruce Creek or not.
We need to move forward with, with that, for sure, right? For those projects.
We do. We have, we have a teeny tiny bit of flexibility, but they would need to know right away.
Okay, well.
Kind of texting back and forth here with.
That doesn't stop us from doing anything else, so that's, I'm fine with that.
Well, I'm fine with Spruce Creek High School. You know that. I've been talking about that for years, so.
And I can come back with another, uh, display that shows what that would look like. Uh, we'll go back and, if you wanted to, to do the, the major project there. Right now, it's not showing that way. So you have something to compare to graphically.
That, that would be very nice. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Cologne?
I know recently we relooked at Enterprise. What, did we find anything new that, as far as their condition and they're different than when you created the assessment?
Not that I'm aware of, but I'll go back and double check that for you.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, Ms. Haynes?
So, you know, when we start talking though about zoning, I think it is important. And we did some of it recently. You know, when we built the new George Mark, like, okay, prior to building the new George Marx, we rezoned a part of George Marx over to Citrus Grove. Then we turned around and we just rezoned them back. And we rezoned a new development into Berry to Enterprise. And nobody got any choice on that. And granted, yes, we weren't closing a school on that, but we took away the old George Marx and put a brand new one there, you know? So we took that history piece away. So we took that history piece away. Yes, we gave them a new school, but we've been rezoning kids based on growth, you know, or what makes the most sense for transportation and things like that. And that's what we're going to do with Turri T. We're going to rezone those kids back in to Turri T. So I do think zoning plays a part in this. Because if we have a school that is underutilized versus a school that's very close to that, that is at-capacity or overutilized, you know, we should, those are things we have to do. Like, we have to be financially responsible and not allow a school to become way over capacity when there's a school, you know, within three miles of that that's undercapacity. And so I think that was partially what Mr. Cologne was trying to get at, just talking about the fact that Pine Ridge and Atlantic were built at the same time, but they're holding a different number of students, who are talking about busing them, you know, across lines or anything. But I think that should be something that we should be looking at almost, you know, every year or every two to three years on where we at-capacity-wise and do we need, you know, based on building or growth in an area, do we need to redistribute? And then what I would say about Spruce Creek is this, when we went to build, because I attended all the board meetings, when we went to build University, we knew that if we built University based on the guidelines that the state gave for the size of a high school, we were going to open it on day one and already be overcapacity. I mean, we knew that.
Yes, yeah.
Okay? So, we petitioned the state at that time to be able to build it larger. So if we're not going to look at rezoning over in that area where you're at, okay? Or where programs are or replay, you know, moving programs around or anything to have it, then what I would just say is, I would encourage us to not build a new school knowing on day one that we open it, we're overcapacity. You know, we need to take that into account, too. And we were smart at the time, the board that was here at the time, making the decisions for University High, I give them credit, because they knew that they needed to build it larger than what you build a typical high school where it was going to open up already overcapacity. And it's pretty much almost at-capacity now, but we at least had a few years where we didn't open it already with portables on day one. Because that just makes no sense. Because if we're trying to get rid of portables, then, you know, we can't build a school and then still open it on day one with portables. So I just wanted that to be said. Because I think, I think we're going to have to look at some rezoning.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? Because I'd like to have a 10-minute break before we go to our next...
So, can I just recap so that my team knows what to do?
Yes, please, yes.
So, I still, am I looking at reassessing projects?
Yes. Future projects.
Okay.
Not on the 80 million.
I'm sorry?
Not on this plan, right?
Not on ones that are already been paid for, understand?
So, my one question there, Lisa, we're going to 80 million, and this is what we've agreed on. But just any one of them, I don't care which one, any one of them that's a renovation versus a full, if we had, would we be allowed to put other capital money towards it if we needed to build it as a new school and it wouldn't break the rules with this?
Yes. Yes, you could.
Okay, that's what I needed to know.
Yeah. The second thing I'll share with you, and I have to get with Dr. Shanoff on this, because we'll have to explore this, it's just not something we've gotten our hands wrapped around with everything that's been going on. But typically, what happens is with redistricting, at each level, you have a cycle. And so that cycle happens like every five years that you come back and you look at your schools and you do that adjustment. I'm telling you, as you know, Volusia's really unique because of that division in the middle, and that's a real challenge, but we'll have to kind of break it up separately. He and I will get together and we'll start looking at that cycle, when's the last time it was done for high school, middle, and elementary? And we can start to look at that. And typically, what you do for that is you look for those schools that are overcapacity, like a Spruce Creek and then Atlantic, and where it makes sense. The other side of that, though, too, you know, you want to, you kind of want to get schools at about 90 to 95% and kind of hold, because what you also want to do is you want to make sure that, remember, we're a district that says yes to our parents in choice. We want to make sure that we hold places available for them to build or go. So what you don't do is you don't do this. You don't take an IB student that's at Spruce Creek and say, you can't be an IB student anymore, and you pull them out. That's part of that choice program, right? So we just have to be sensitive onto that as we go forward and we start to look at this. And quite honestly, the overcapacity thing doesn't bother me as much as it does some superintendents, because again, at the end of the day, I want them in our school rather than somebody else's. So, I got our two directions. We will start looking at a redistricting cycle and reassess projects that have not been started yet.
The only, the only thing, Dr. Fritz, is that I'm not totally, I wouldn't want to, I just wouldn't want to waste a whole lot of staff's time on, on the issue about the small schools. We've been through this so many times.
I didn't even put that on the decision.
Trying to close, trying to close a Coronado. Or trying to close a Ormond Beach Elementary School.
That's a huge conversation.
You know, it's just...
We're not there yet.
You know, yeah, no. I mean, there's so many other things that staff needs to spend their time on, I just wouldn't want them to go there. I don't know how Ms. Cuthbert feels about Coronado. We couldn't even close, re-Patillo, which made a lot more sense, but Coronado would just be, ugh.
During COVID, they had less than 200.
Yeah, I think it's also important to get our numbers, before we make crazy, not crazy, but big decisions like that. We got to get our enrollment numbers back up, and we got to kind of see where we're going to land. That's why, these first two steps are something we can do now. We're not saying that we won't do any more Osseo or Ortonas, what I'm saying is, we're not ready to jump on that yet. You know, we're hoping and we're very optimistic that our enrollment numbers will start to rise. There's no question. We feel good about it. We're seeing construction happen all over the county, we're feeling like more people are moving into Volusia. So I think we have to get that information first, because to your point earlier, what happens if Stark goes up to 680 kids next year? All right, so...
Okay, thank you both very much. We're going to take a 10-minute break and then come back and discuss 3.01, superintendent's evaluation. Thank you. 10 minutes.
Welcome back to our work session. We are on now three point one superintendent's evaluation. It is twelve ten. Mr. Doran.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. I thought it might be best to start with the timeline and end with the timeline. So if we could have the timeline put up on the screen, this of course, everything I'm about to tell you is just something to get you started. The board has the absolute discretion to make all these decisions. I created this timeline for the sole purpose of kind of giving you an idea of how we might go about this. Because we do have a deadline of August fifteenth. Not that that's a hard like legal deadline, but we could do it, say, for instance, in a school board meeting following the August fifteenth. But that's what we're focused on. So today is June seventh and we're having this workshop and we have to come up with an evaluation instrument. Depending on how many changes you make, if any, to the evaluation instrument that we've used in the past. The idea was for me to go back, make those changes, and then bring it back to you on June twenty second. Typically, board members ask for about a month to fill out the form, fill out the evaluation sheet, and get the information returned. So that's why we chose July twenty second. And then, once those documents, the evaluations, the independent board member evaluations are filled out. I pull them together typically, historically, and meet with the chairperson, whoever that is at that given year. And we come up with a consensus evaluation, which is then subsequently modified or accepted as written and approved by the board. Which, right now, we've got a proposed date of doing that for August tenth. So let's now talk about what it is that we need. You see kind of the progression of this. You see the timeframe that we have to accomplish these goals. You, you, you can get it, you've got a sense of what we're trying to do here. So the question becomes then, more specifically, what is it that you're going to use for an evaluation instrument? And what is, what are the broad, general issues that have to be addressed? And I think it's important to understand that there are essentially two things going on here. There is a superintendent evaluation that is very broad and comprehensive in nature. And I have previously provided you with the instruments that we've used most recently in this regard. If we could put up maybe the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen superintendent evaluation framework form, that would be good. And the procedures are set out here. So, as you can see, there are one, two, three, four, five, six different broad categories presently in the form that we last used, which was in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. No board has done an evaluation of a superintendent since that time. Why? Well, because that was the evaluation of Mr. Russell, who then subsequently resigned. Dr. Fritz was hired, and at the time he was hired, there was nothing to evaluate. That's when the board set for purposes of his performance compensation, the goal of creating a strategic plan, which you all recently addressed in a meeting here recently, in terms of the performance compensation. But anyway, that goal was set, and of course, there was no evaluation because there, he had not been an employee here long enough to evaluate it. Then, needless to say, many things occurred, which was the perfect storm between Dr. Fritz having to be out for a number of months and COVID becoming the primary focus of the board. We had the interim superintendent, Dr. Balgman, and so there was no evaluation done during that period of time because Dr. Fritz was out and now he's back. So there was, what's important, it's really a mess, and it's very confusing, but we're going to get on track. Okay, and so if I haven't, if at the end of this, if there's any confusion, please ask me. But again, just set, fixing your mind, we have this broad evaluation of an employee, so to speak. You know, student achievement, effective, board relations, these broad categories. Then, there's the separate question of very specific goals. And as you can see from the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen evaluation, there were very specific goals that Mr. Russell was charged with trying to accomplish. That, other than that one instance where we set the strategic plan as a goal, no other goals have ever been set by the board looking forward. You have to set these goals a year in advance because the superintendent has to know what the goals are. If they're going to be part of a performance compensation issue, he has to know what they are so that he can work on them for the year. And then you evaluate whether or not he accomplished those goals. So, we have no goals to review between now and August fifteenth because none were set for all the reasons I just described. What we do have to do, though, is evaluate the superintendent as best you can, given the issues that I've already raised, and for this past year, so the twenty twenty-one school year. That, in my mind, would be the focus on those six categories. Then, separate and apart from that, you have these specific goals. Now, unlike any time in the past, the superintendent's contract, strike that, let me rephrase it. The superintendent's contract as written presently has a reference to an attachment that is a list of these specific goals. There has been, for a number of years, performance compensation provision in the superintendent's contract. And whether we do it together or do it as two separate documents is really pretty irrelevant. But, but that's, that's what we're focused on trying to accomplish between now and August fifteenth. So this is our beginning point. I know there was some reference to other counties and whatnot. We spent a lot of time putting together this document that you see here, the seventeen eighteen document. And we, as I mentioned in a prior board meeting, solicited forms from a number of counties around the state. Quite frankly, we were, you know, really shocked at how poor the documents were. I think this is the best one that I've seen. It is, this dot, this form, this evaluation form as written, has only been used once, and that was in seventeen and eighteen. Prior to that, we had a completely different document, which, as Mr. Persis and Ms. Cuthbert will remember, is one that had been used for, and I hesitate to put a number on it, but as long as I can remember, which means probably like fifteen years. Nobody was happy with it. We had outgrown it. It was, it wasn't very, it just wasn't satisfactory to the board, at least. And so that's why we put together what you see now in front of you as the seventeen eighteen. Now, following the seventeen eighteen, there was also, as you can see from the eighteen nineteen document, there were some changes to it. And the only changes you're going to find on page two, if we can go there, although you can see it in other places in the, in the document. The changes were the weighting, you know, assigning a percentage of weight to each of the categories. The thought, at the time, I remember Mr. Persis being particularly focused on this, was that if you have six categories for evaluation, you know, is it really fair to say that we consider student achievement as important as board relations? And so, the board definitely wanted to address that and, and make that change going forward. So that in looking at these competency descriptors, there would be a weighted emphasis on each of them and for purposes of the overall final analysis in terms of an evaluation. The way this has been done historically, for instance, if you go to the next page, page three of the, of this document, you see the legend where it says commendable, reasonable progress toward performance indicators, and then improvement expected. So historically, prior to this document, there were actually five categories, and the board wanted to reduce it down to three. They were not as named here. The previous one that was used for twelve, fifteen years in a row had the highest level was outstanding, and the bottom level was needs improvement, and then there were, you know, a total of five options in between. The way that we evaluate this historically, for purposes of coming up with a consensus evaluation, is that we round up. So if, for instance, three of the five of you said commendable on some category, and the other two said reasonable progress toward performance indicators, it would be rounded up three, two, so it would be commendable in the final consensus evaluation. That can get, you know, a little bit difficult if, for instance, you get two commendable, two reasonable progress, and one improvement expected. Then, you, you just assign the numbers one, two, three, you add them up, you divide, and you round up. So in that case, it would be a reasonable progress would be the, the final consensus position of the board. So, at this point, let me just leave you with this thought. If you go back to the timeline and we're looking at August fifteenth, it would be very difficult to substantially modify the existing evaluation instrument for this year. It took months and a lot of research and et cetera to get this one put together. It would, it's not something we could do within this timeframe. If you were to say, we would just want to throw this out and start over, I, I don't see how you could possibly do that in the timeframe as written. Now, if that's what you do want to do going forward, I think for the next twenty-two, twenty-three year, then we need to know that now so that, you know, we could start to work on that. And, and over the course of the year, we would come up with an evaluation. This is totally, all this is completely within the board's discretion as to how you evaluate the superintendent. However, the superintendent does have in his contract a provision that says that he gets to provide input. So it's not, you can't do it in a vacuum. If he has, you know, something to say, we need to hear that as well about how he feels about this or anything else that you might consider putting together for purposes of his evaluation. The, so with that having been said, if there, unless there are any questions, I think that's kind of an overview. You all got an email from me, so you, you got probably a little more in-depth analysis of how we've done this historically and where we've come from. And, yes, Ms. Haines.
Okay, so I want to make sure I'm clear on something. So number one, we don't have any goals right now. We all know the reason why we have no goals. So we would just be using this document to evaluate without any real goals that we're looking at?
In, in my mind, it would be categories, they're not numbered, but those six categories on page one is what you're going to be focused on for this past school year. And as far as specific goals, there weren't any set a year ago for him to address.
So, so he returned in February, so we're looking at, we're making an evaluation using this document from February, for his time, February through June?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, next. I need to understand what the contract says. And so we just paid out based on the one goal that there was, it was supposed to be just a short-term goal, but ended up being a much longer-term goal. So is there a payout attached to this at the same time where there is no goal?
Well, the answer to that is, is problematic because you didn't provide any performance goals as anticipated by the contract, for all the obvious reasons. That's not to say that the school board, if it chose to, could not provide performance compensation for this past year for the limited time that he was operating, you know, just based on performance in general. But you don't have any specific goals. His contract anticipates specific goals. We didn't do the, just to make sure we're all clear on the record, I know we are. We didn't do specific goals because of the superintendent's absence and because of COVID. And so, can you, can you pay him performance compensation for this past year? Yes, but it wouldn't be based on anything you set up a year ago that would be specific.
No, I think what I'm asking is, what does the contract state we have to do, since there were no goals set?
Well, it doesn't anticipate it. It just doesn't anticipate not setting them, you know? So it, I, you know, I, I, it just, it doesn't, it doesn't anticipate. So I, it says what it says. We didn't set the goals. We didn't set the goals, which should have occurred in August fifteenth. But in August fifteenth, Dr. Fritz was out and, and was out until February. He left, I think, July one, and so we just didn't, we didn't evaluate him. We didn't consider goals. And truthfully, nobody was even thought about it much because, I mean, I knew it was there, but he wasn't here. And we didn't have, we had, we were in the middle of the throes of the COVID epidemic, so it did, it didn't, it just wasn't created.
I'd like to then state that I do appreciate that there are percentages. I want to thank, you know, those of you that were previously here for attaching percentages to these categories. But because of what we have faced with the pandemic and COVID, I'm not even sure that we're going to have, when you look at category number one, the student achievement, where you've attached thirty-five percent, which is the highest percentage of the six categories. I don't know that we're even going to have student data back to help us fill out that section. So I'm, so I'm going, you're going to be asking me to fill out a section with no student data back because I, I'm struggling with this. I'm struggling that number one, and I, and I don't put the blame anywhere on anyone. It, it's, it's where we're at right now, but I'm struggling that we don't have set specific goals. I'm struggling, no, let me back up. I'm struggling that we had previously one goal. I know what the intent was behind it because he came on in December, you know, and we were thinking we were going to be doing a quick, short evaluation the month of July for August, but I'm struggling that we had one goal last time. We just paid that goal out. We have no goals. You're asking me to complete an evaluation with no goals, possibly having no student data to even help drive the largest category, which is thirty-five percent category one, and then possibly paying out more compensation in August. I, I'm struggling with that.
So, so let me, let me just say this about that. Again, it's completely up to the board. But one very reasonable position for the board to take here today is that we're not going to do an evaluation of the superintendent for the year twenty-one, or twenty twenty-one because of all the things you just described. There's no requirement under law. It's not like statutory mandated or anything like that. Heck, you know, Mr. Persis can, knows better than I do, but, you know, I mean, it's, it's, the county does their evaluation by, all, all the county council people going around the room, literally, at the last meeting before Christmas, you know, and saying, you know, whatever they want to say, and that's the evaluation that the county manager gets, so.
And it's not even written.
And it's not written, nothing.
There's no document on it.
So, so, you know, one, one possible, you know, and, and I think, more reasonable than ever, based on what you just outlined, one, one very reasonable position for the board to take would be, you know, this year has been what it has been, and the kids aren't being evaluated, the grades, we don't have the data, we don't have this. We don't need to do an evaluation of Dr. Fritz this year. But what we do need, what we absolutely do need, is goals set for this upcoming year. Because his contract provides for that, and, and we have to do that. So one option, just to restate it again, is today, you know what, looking at all this, you know, Dr. Fritz, be, be aware that we are going to evaluate you August fifteenth of two thousand twenty-two. We're going to evaluate you based on the instrument that, you know, we have here with these six different criteria. We're going to do it based on these weighted percentages, whatever. We're going to do it based on these weighted percentages, whatever they are, if you accept these or change them, and we're going to evaluate you based on the goals that we're setting now for August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and that'd be the end of it. Yeah.
I have a suggestion, I have a suggestion. He created a strategic plan, goals and strategies for us. I would like to change, and and this took us a long time, but we did not have a strategic plan as well planned as this one, to scrap the first five and replace them with number one, two, three, four, and five here, and I'd like to keep the executive board relations because that's very important. What we can do is do a, come to a halfway. Something that I noticed in the capital budget, not the capital budget, but the budget that Ms. Snead presented, was, for example, high-quality staff, two-C strength and professional learning system. What has he done? He has created personal learning development for our our summer school. He's done, and and then the other one is also in the Ezra Fund. So what we could do is to say, this is what we have seen him accomplish in the last seven months through to to us, what we've seen him accomplish, and then this is what we're looking forward to seeing from him till next year, if we decide not to do one this year. But that way, it gives him guidance on, and give him credit for creating the strategic plan, because I know he 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 talked with Dr. Balgman back and forth, and I know they evaluated on a lot of things and discussed, and that was very important. I mean, to have that professional learning. I mean, she had that professional learning those first seven months, correct, from July to February, but I would, I would really like for him to have some feedback, official feedback that is maybe non, not, there's, there's no punishment, what, that's not
Not a grading system?
Yeah, not a grading system, but give of an update of of what we see, what has accomplished, because he came back in a difficult time, created a robust summer program, and our, this first one, the high-quality instruction, he combined the instruction along with the curriculum, where we divided it up, achievement and curriculum, but really, one creates the other, and then the the achievement creates the, it's a circle, it's like the the rain or the water system, you know, the clouds, the evaporation. So, but that way, we can present that and evaluate what we see that he's done so far, and then say, come August twenty-twenty-two, we're going to come back to the same thing. At least we will have a basis to, this is what we said, this is what we were looking forward to, he has an ability to adjust, would be fair to him, we get more concrete direction from the board and to see if he approves that, and we would have a much more clear picture by August. And then keep everything else, but base it on the strategic plan, because that's the goal of the whole county. Of every presentation that we saw this this morning, it all has strategic plans on the bottom, see? Everything is addressing the strategic plan.
So my question to you then, Ms. Cuthbert?
Uh huh.
Is, I'm not opposed, like, I like your thinking and where it's going, and I think, yes, it can be utilized, but are we weighting it the same as the categories you current, the way you
No, we we would have to adjust the weights.
Because I'll be honest with you, and I appreciate the weighting, trust me, okay? But like, even, my thought was, even when I looked at this and I thought we were maybe going to have to stay with this document, you know, category four, which is the human resources, I think needed to be weighted higher, because I've said all along, one of the primary goals is, we've got to staff our front lines, we have to staff our classrooms with certified teachers, because that's where instruction starts. You don't get student achievement if you don't have high-quality teachers or teachers, frankly, in those classrooms to provide instruction, and that's been an issue that I have had since I got on this board, and we had large numbers of substitutes, long-term substitutes, you know, with only high school diplomas, and I appreciate those people, and and that's great when an accident happens or a maternity leave that's going to be short-term or whatever. So I need to know, like, looking at what you're talking about, or is there going to be some discussion about how to weight those? Because I I do, I so appreciate what you did, okay? But I just would need, because you don't get one thing without the other. Like, you can't raise student achievement if you don't have the people in the classrooms to provide the instruction, and yes, you need the curriculum and resource materials, and we've made a lot of progress over the last couple of years. We've gotten teachers' curriculum and textbooks and materials, and and we're continuing on with that, with the adoption of the new ELA and making sure that they're going to have the resources they need. So I'm not, I'm not opposed to that, but if we, if we go that route, are we, is it really an evaluation or is it just a, this is where we see you're at, and then are we tying or not tying compensation to it?
Well, we have to, that has to be in the contract, whether there's compensation to it or not.
You're not limited
Is there compensation tied? Is there compensation tied to his evaluation?
Oh, definitely.
Okay, so
You have to, you have to give him some goals.
Okay, well, we did give him a goal.
To work toward, well, you did that once.
Once.
And you're not limited to six, so you don't have to replace these with those, you could add those onto these or some combination.
No, these are fine, this is a good idea. Yeah, and I think at this time, since he doesn't know about the weighting, I don't think we should wait this time, but we should think about it over the summer, and maybe by August, we'll, we can wait it if you would like to, gives us a couple of months to think about it, but gives him a year to to understand, or or he knows it had. It's very important, just like when we teach, we have to have an overview of the entire year. What do we want to accomplish by the end of the first quarter, second quarter, and what do we want, where do we want to move our students by the end of that last year? And he's no different. So I think it would be great, at least right now, not to have it waited, because it would be unfair to him, but if he has these goals plus, I mean, he did talk to us a great deal, and we always said at the DAS, the communication between the superintendent and the board members are extremely important, it's a two-way street. But if there is compensation attached to this, that's another story.
Well, and let me just say this about that, I I I don't have that stuff in my mind, what exactly how it's written, but I'm guessing that that the strategic plan is fairly broad.
Yes, and it has everything right there for us to look at, yeah.
Yeah, and so, do you mind if I
Sure.
Quick look at that. So it's, it's fairly broad in its language, so if you look at, for instance, the goals that were used with
There were percentages.
Mr. Russell, you're talking about things that are very objective, they're not subjective, and they're very specific in nature, and I'm just picking out the very first one, improvement of the annual student dropout rate by point two percent in that particular school year. So in terms of evaluating for performance compensation purposes, he knows what his goal is, you can very objectively determine whether or not he met the goal. It doesn't require that the goals be so specific, there's no requirement on any level other than his contract does require that we set goals and, but the more specific they are, the easier it is for him to understand them and not be blindsided by some subjective interpretation of what the goal was at a later point in time, which is, you know, we want to be eminently fair to him in in that regard. So I just throw out there, if if the idea is, in terms of goals, you know, I'm just picking one off the top of the hat, four A, strategically deploy technology through equitable and standardized processes, blah, blah, blah. Well, how are you going to evaluate, that's as subjective as it gets. Each of the five of you could have completely different thoughts on whether or not he met that goal, and I don't know if he, so I just mentioned that.
Well, for example, right now, under category two curriculum, I'm looking at the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen document, page five of fourteen. Under the performance indicators, the first indicator, two-point-one, says, "The district will show progress in meeting the expectations of the state performance plan, which is the least restrictive environment by ensuring that eighty percent of students with disabilities are instructed with their non-disabled peers at least eighty percent of the school week." I don't even have access to that data myself to even know whether I'm using this or switching to the other or what we're doing to even, I mean, we're, we're, we're between a rock and a hard place, all right? It is what it is. I mean, the honesty is, we hired him in December of twenty-nineteen, by twenty-twenty of March, we were no longer on campuses, we were in the middle of a pandemic, then he had to go out, okay? And and what we dealt with for months was just how to survive reopening schools, cleanliness, mask, plexiglass, you know, hand sanitize, all of that, just to, you know, feeding kids and everything else. And so, you know, Dr. Fritz came back in February, so Ms. Cuthbert, like, if I have to fill this out, starting like July one, we're talking February, March, April, May, and June, we're talking five months, five months that still has not really been stable, not because it's not any of our, you know, no one's to blame on this, but it's still been five months of, we haven't, you know, I'm ready to get back, what I'm hoping next year is we can get back to the instruction of students and this board talking about best practices on academic learning, but I don't even have access to this, and I don't know that, I don't know that even the staff has it, like, how many man-hours is it going to take for somebody to go say, hey, under that, just that one performance indicator, did, did it happen this year or didn't it happen? I I mean,
Okay, then what would you
I'm not opposed to giving some feedback, like, just some feedback, not calling it an evaluation, but just feedback, this is where I see where we're at, here's where I'd like to see us be, and then in August, setting some very, you know, straightforward, clear-cut goals for an evaluation that would be conducted
The following year.
The following year. I, I'm not comfortable really doing an evaluation right now, and and my fear is if I do an evaluation, it's not going to be, it's going to be my perception of it even more, because I don't know that I'm going to have any data to base it on, we don't know that we'll have or what we need, so that's where I'm, and it's going to be done on five months.
Okay, so what you're saying is not to have a formal evaluation for this year?
That's just my opinion.
No, no, I I I totally agree, that's why I said, let's do feedback. You know, I would, I really would like for him to have direction from the board, and I, and I tried to get this from board members three years ago when I was chair then, said the superintendent is supposed to carry out the vision and the direction of the school board, because we don't have the expertise of running the schools, and he does, he has the education, the experience, he does that for us, but he also has to know where we are, not just in through, you know, private conversations, but officially. I think we need to have some kind of official feedback form, and if we do it by what he has guided his, you know, this is how, what he set up, well, with our help, but he and his staff have established this, these are what, that's how he presents everything to us, so and this is how we are moving forward. If we use this as a rubric, not weighted, but use it, and there's nothing, and I know there's nothing objective, not a whole lot of objective, but what do we see? Just like I put out, I said, I noticed the professional development for the summer, I saw the millions that he specified, or his staff specified, for helping our teachers. That is, to me, that was phenomenal. We need to reinvest, to me, that's reinvest in our structure. So if we can do that, and then by August, have the summer to understand what kind of, and and by using these two, by using some goals, so he has now something specific to plan on, so his staff understands, especially the assistant superintendents who are in charge of specific areas, I'm sure they too will then be looking at this to see how their superintendent will be evaluated specifically. But I I agree with you, we just came to the same conclusion with two, from two different points of view, but we have not heard from the other three board members. So based on what Ms. Haynes and I have stated, where is, where's, what's your pleasure? Okay, Mr. Cologne?
I agree with no evaluation, again, the timeline was extremely crazy and and we only have a short time, and I think we can accomplish that communication by setting the goals. I don't need to write an evaluation to say, you know, I think that, you know, if if it's the pleasure of the board that, let's say, we want to see the graduation rate exceed ninety-nine point nine-nine percent, then, I'm kidding, then that speaks to satisfaction or dissatisfaction to where we're at. So I think that by actually doing an evaluation, we we would be setting ourselves up rather than spend, I'd rather spend my time on talking on the goals for the future rather than the unfortunate past that, you know, thank God, we're on the, seem to be on the other side of, but, you know, and we made it, so that's a start, so that's my thought. And I, and I agree with Jamie, it's funny, if you go back to the one slide that you just had on there that talked about the old evaluation, if you notice, one of them is increased program offerings and enrollment in CTE courses and career academies with equitable access district-wide. Well, that means Jamie's getting everything. And so again, because the land has very few offerings, and so, you know, it just, this, this doesn't jive with our reality right now, and I think we're in a better place than this evaluation, it just doesn't seem, you know, we're talking about transition fares, post-secondary, you know, expansion of post-secondary offerings. That's all, and and we're talking about five months.
Yeah.
So this is outdated, this is not relevant to our reality today, this is relevant to where we were, not where we are, and in all fairness, I I don't, I wouldn't even know where to start with this, and it probably, if we went to the T, because it doesn't line up, it would reflect negatively, unfortunately, but, you know, how can you be evaluated on something you didn't know was coming? That's just my thought, in five months, for five, for a five-month period. So that's it, that's my thought.
Thank you, Mr. Cologne, Mr. Persis.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I I was going to suggest that because he was really only here four months as far as the school year goes with the, with the students, February through May, yeah, that it it would, it would, it would not be fair to to use any sort of evaluation instrument, it just, it's just, it just isn't, I wouldn't do that to a teacher that I only had at my school for four months and and hold her accountable or blame her or give her too much credit. I mean, it's just, it's just not, not right. I like the idea of the strategic plan and just substitute, you know, make those the five goals. Madam Chair, if you think we still need to add the effective board relations, you know, that's fine, but I could also just say that that is part of communication in internal and external, so if you don't want to create a, another separate category, we could make it part of that. I agree with, as far as the weights go, it'd be, I think, we could quickly come up with the weights for this, the first one is obviously the the most important, and the people that we employ are the the second most important, so between the two of those, that should be probably sixty percent of the, of the total easily, and then, you know, ten, 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 or something like that, and and it's done. And then along that same line, I I don't think the the superintendent this year would, would, would qualify Ted for a bonus because, well, for two reasons, one, we didn't set a goal, and then secondly, he was only here for four months, for five months, so, you know, as much as I'd like to, you know, throw a little cash your way, Dr. Fritz, it's just that it'd be like after the fact, you know, like, so that wouldn't be fair. So I I think So, uh, I think, you know where, where I am, and then, does that coincide with your timeframe, your timeline? I mean, could we come back and?
Well, what I'm, I'm, what I'm hearing, uh, generally speaking, is that we're not going to do an evaluation for, for this past year. We're going to do a feedback session.
Yeah.
For bad, lack of a better term, uh, that that would be provided verbally by all the board members at a future meeting, and, you know, um, just literally just have, put it on the agenda, uh, feedback of superintendent, uh, for the past school year, recognizing all the parameters.
Is it possible for him to also put in input?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. He puts input every, every step of the way. He has, so, what I'm hearing is we do that, feedback session, get us back on track, um, approve written goals for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And August fifteenth of two thousand twenty-two, he would be evaluated in a written format, um, and specifically evaluated on the goals that were set for the year, uh, for purposes of determining what, if any, amount of performance compensation he would be entitled to under his contract, given those goals that were set.
So, you see us maybe having this feedback session, that school board meeting in July, like that last one, whenever that is, the end of July? We'd have some data to look at by then, perhaps?
Or, or the August tenth?
August tenth is probably better.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, I don't know what else will be on that a- agenda. Don't want to just overload. That, that first one in Au- August is usually pretty hefty.
All right, thank you, Ms. Bruce. Before we talk, because we haven't heard anything from Ms. Burnett yet. Please, Ms. Burnett.
Quiet over here. No, I agree with everybody, and this is my first time doing this, so, um, I'm definitely listening to all of your input. But I, I agree, it would be unfair to, to provide an evaluation based on the parameters that, that have unfortunately been handed to us the year. But Dr. Fritz definitely deserves our attention to have goals set so that we can, um, give him something to strive for. And I will say the strategic plan, everybody that has come up since you've introduced it, they, every one of them come up and they talk about how their, how their presentation ties into the strategic plans. So, they've, they've heard you, they hear you. So, um, I'm in favor of, of giving a feedback session and setting goals. Thank you.
Ms. Haynes?
So, one of the other things that I've given a lot of thought to, um, and it's basically for all the years that I've been around, we've, in the past, and Mr. Persis, you're real familiar with this too, we've done, you know, climate surveys out at schools so that, you know, that gives you as an administrator or, you know, whatever, kind of like, here's what's working on my campus, or here's what's not working on my campus and everything. And we've been doing some pulse checks with Ms. Hazel out at schools that some of us are aware of, because some of our schools have been involved, you know, even to get like a positive pulse check, you know, to see, you know, wow, this is working at this school, or where are areas that need to be addressed? I, so, thinking about that and thinking about some of the feedback that they have received, um, I was kind of, because I was really struggling with how I was going to do this evaluation, like, right now. And so, one of the things I thought about was possibly, and I think this would help me even with the feedback portion, is if we could do like a pulse check or, or a survey to, um, out, and I was thinking like to the district staff that's at, at a certain level and up, and to our administrators on our campuses, I'd like to hear from them prior to setting goals even for the superintendent, from them on what's working on, you know, right now that they feel, or what's not working, in a way that they feel safe telling us, you know, like, I have the resources that I need, or the materials that I need, um, you know, for my teachers to provide instruction, or, you know, I have the staff that I need, or, or, or the support, or, no, this is where I need more, you know, but, but not in a way that they feel that they can be retaliating against, just like when we do all the others, they're anonymous, like, we don't know where they come from. But I was just considering that, because I thought that would help me in devising the goals too that we needed to build on where, like, yes, looking at the strategic plan, but what's already working in the strategic plan and what's not? Like, where do they need more support, or where do we need to focus? Because if we don't ever ask those questions, we have a great strategic plan, but we can go through with the mindset of, we think something's working and it's not. So, that was just my thought.
Thank you. The, the only thing is, uh, teachers are now off-campus?
No, I was, I, I said, and.
Oh, for next year?
No, no, I was saying principals, and assistant principals.
Okay.
And district staff.
Okay.
To, to give, like, to start with that. Like, I'm not opposed to the next year, so, but like, we have a shorter time period right now. And those are the people that have worked, like, the staff here, that's the group that's worked the closest with Dr. Fritz, and like, they're the first layer right now trying to oversee the strategic plan, do you know what I'm saying, to get it out and make it move? So, I was just wanting to start with that group first, to kind of have them give us some feedback that would help us to know, you know, and it would help him to know what's working, or, hey, we need, you know, if that group comes back and says, we need specific training in this, do you know what I'm saying, or to be able to give this kind of training, that helps all of us.
Okay. So, my suggestion then is to, if we do this survey, if you agree with what Mrs. Haynes has said, that could be the, the results given to us maybe July, our July meeting, the end of the month. That way, we have until August tenth to write our evaluations and also see.
No, 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 we're not writing that.
Well, you know what I mean, the, the, to have our feedback session. But I, me, I'm going to write mine down, and so I can remember it. And also, I would like Dr. Fritz to give us his input, you know, his support, or his detailed support, what he was able to accomplish, so that he can remind us. And it's a good summary, it's a good summary, I mean, for, for all of us. And that also be due on July, is it twenty, when is our meeting in July? Is it twenty-eighth, twenty-sixth?
So.
Twenty-second?
Ms. Cuthbert.
Twenty-seventh.
Would you mind, like, would, would it be appropriate, like, if we just asked Ms. Hazel to come up for a minute, if she could explain kind of how she's done these pulse checks out at that, like, just for a few minutes, so that, because I think a lot of this, not, not exactly, but some of the similar, like, she asks, she doesn't ask, she asks questions on this that allows for them to give input. Does that make sense?
Oh, yes. Uh, and I think it's nice, especially if it's anonymous.
Yes.
It'd be more truthful. I'm just looking at the time, um, also, and it's, and it's almost one o'clock, so if we can do this briefly, and we need to give, um, some.
I'm sorry for putting you on this.
No, 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 that's okay. I'm just trying to keep us on a, on a regular basis, so we can all get our lunch. So, I, and then we need to give feedback to, uh, Mr. Dorn, so that, and also for Mr., Dr. Fritz, so that we, we all know where we're headed. Okay, Ms. Hazel?
Good morning, everyone, or afternoon. So, I think what you're asking are some questions about the pulse checks that we have done, and it's a fairly new process. I've been to several schools, and also to some departments within our district. And the school survey is quite different from the department survey, only because we're looking at different things, but I would say they both align very closely with the strategic plan. The school one is just a lot more granular, because they're the ones doing the work of each area. And the surveys are divided into each area of the strategic plan. They're distributed anonymously to every, all the stakeholders at the school, except with, not parents, but anybody who works at the school. And then there is a session to give comments that, um, and this was really done at Dr. Fritz's, uh, direction. He wanted to know from the schools, what is this great vision and this plan that we have? What does that look like in practice, from the boots on the ground? And, and what, what do you want me to know, filtered anonymously, um, so that we can make those decisions? So, it's a Google form, it's anonymous. I'm the only one that has access to, to the survey. I mean, we give an overall report, but, um, it was really done at Dr. Fritz's direction in an effort to hear very transparently what is happening on the campuses and the sites.
So, if you think about, like, the ones that you use for departments, um, because granted, we're not doing school level, but could that be easily adapted to go out to administrators and district-level staff to get, like, the feedback we're looking at, since you've kind of already built it around the strategic plan, um, piece?
The one that I use for district departments is actually not my survey. It's adapted from Ken Blanchard's, um, leading, there's a book he wrote about leading. And it's, measures high-performing organizations. And, um, so there's actually a numerical scale that's attached to the answers. It goes from strongly disagree to strongly agree. There's a numerical scale that does it, and it measures, uh, different areas of leadership. There's, I have it right here. Fourteen questions, fifteen questions, and then a, a place for comments.
Would we be able to accomplish it by July twenty-seventh? Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Persis?
Yeah. So, my, my thinking on this, Jamie, is, uh, I would, I wouldn't go lower than the director level as far as district staff. I'd keep it.
I was thinking.
Director and above.
I was thinking coordinator and above.
And I wouldn't go to assistant principals either.
You would just do principals?
I'd just do, I'd just do prin, you got to do the, with the people that, that meet with, uh, Dr. Fritz, and assistant principals don't.
I'm, I'm fine with principals, but I was thinking coordinator, because we don't have that many directors, we have more coordinators, like.
And I don't, and I just don't know when you all meet, how high coordinators are. I'm, I'm thinking any department head, like, for instance, um, um, transportation, you know, I mean, all of the operational, the people, um.
Well, when I thought of curriculum, when I thought of curriculum though, like, K-12, um, reading, or K-12 ELA, K-12 math, and K-12 science are coordinators. And I would have kind of wanted input from them, you know, because they're leading that whole academic, that's why I thought coordinators, but I can go with.
Yeah, I, I, I would rather have, have their supervisors, because they're the one giving the charge to their coordinators.
Well, then that's the assistant superintendents, which would mean we'd not be going any lower in that category than assistant superintendent.
Don't they have director too?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there's.
Anybody that's, I mean, um, I, I, we, we work with all levels depending on the function. I mean, you know, Jose is a coordinator, and I work with Jose, and meet with him regularly.
Okay.
The, the directors are, are fine, but there are some coordinators, for example, maybe in operations, I don't because of the direct, director. But the bottom line is whether I meet with them directly or not.
Yeah.
Their, their impact, probably the work, so, uh, you know.
Whatever you, I just didn't want to have somebody fill out a survey that doesn't really have any.
I think you're right on the principals, though, I will say that. So, I, I have direct contact with them.
Well, and, and what I'm hearing is this would be used as a tool, but I don't think what the board wants to do is to survey somebody's subordinates to determine, you know, whether or not he's doing his job, because quite frankly, uh, there are a lot of people that are in a, a high posi, at the very top of the food chain, that the subordinates aren't very happy with, but that doesn't mean they're not doing a good job. It could mean they're doing a wonderful job. So, you know, it's just a tool, right?
I, I was looking at it to help us see where we set the goals, like, the areas we may need to work on, that we may think one area, do you know what I'm saying? And it may come back, everybody says, that area is not really concerned, like, we're good in that area, you know? Like, like, let's just say staffing classrooms, you know, like, everybody, principals may come back and say, hey, we're staff fully for next year. Don't even, like, spend a lot of time on that, but here's the other area where we need, you know.
Okay, so it's clear to me now, you're, you're focusing on setting the goals, not on evaluating whether or not Dr. Fritz did a, a good job.
I, I just want, because we don't, we don't do the day-to-day work, okay? And so, I'd like to hear from the people that are doing the day-to-day work, like, what's working, what's not working, so that we can use that data to help us set true goals. Because we can sit up here and set goals all day with the strategic plan, and we may, just because one person said, hey, um, external communication's weak, okay? So, then we all focus on external communication and find out, well, no, that person doesn't read, you know, the things, I mean, seriously, right?
I know, I know. Can we get Dr. Fritz's input as this?
Well, it is very awkward to talk about someone when he's sitting in the room. So, Mr. Elephant, would you like to speak?
Um, yeah, I mean, I, as far as the instrument and whatever it is you decide to use, I'm, I'm going to tell you, I've never worked in thirty years chasing an evaluation, and I'm not going to start now. You know, my, my work is defined by me, by that strategic plan, that's the work I'm going to continue to focus in on. As far as I'm concerned, this is not something on top of, it's, and, you know, you evaluate me as you need to evaluate me, based on the work that you said was important. Uh, there are a couple dates that I want to bring up to you and remind you of what's happening, so that you'll have more information for that feedback piece, and, and, um, you know, my team is coming to you on July twenty-seventh to do the end-of-the-year report on goals one through five. And so, what we, here's the vision and the plan. There'll be a, a fairly in-depth, um, I'll call it a, like, a booklet or a notebook for you for each of the goals with the activities. Rachel's helping gather this, we'll take, we'll pull this up, and we'll make sure that you have all the evidence based on those goals and strategies. And then there'll be a work section on July twenty-seventh. We really will hit the metrics that we defined, uh, in the beginning. Remember, for academic success, for example, it's really graduation, school grades moving, which, you know, obviously this year is a different year for that, but also the acceleration rate. And some of that data will be lagging as we, as we go through, because we won't have that information yet. So, but other areas, we will. So, you'll have information. The, the tying of the school, um, I'm sorry, the district strategic plan to school improvement plans, remember, we talked about that, that we're bringing our, our principals and their teams together, so that when they write their school improvement plan, it marries our district strategic plan. That's actually not until August third. So, and I shared with you that I did not want to stress principals out on the strategic plan, so I chunked things out for them. You know, I, I, the first time I stood up them, I went through the presentation, and I said, but I just need you to hear it, because I'm going to come back to you and give you a little more, a little more, a little more. So, the only thing I caution you with the, the survey at that point is you may, you may decide you want to do that after we have that meeting with their team, so that they see the, the pairing of that. And that, it doesn't matter to me when you do it, but I'm just pulling that out to you. And the other thing is, I, you know, I, I appreciate, um, I appreciate your comments. I appreciate you wanting to give me goals and give me time to do this. You know, I wish I could just erase in many ways the last year for all of us. It's, you know, it's not how I intended to start my superintendency by all means. If things had worked properly, July one, we would have done the strategic plan, we would have kicked it off, we would have had the goals in August last year, and now we would be talking about the first year worth of evaluation and success. So, for me, it, you know, seldom in life does God give you a chance to hit reset and get a second chance. And in more ways than one, way more important than this evaluation, I've, I've gotten that second chance. And so, therefore, going forward, whatever you want to do, I'm fine with. I, I do intend to keep working on that strategic plan, because that's what our constituents told us was important. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fritz.
Well, I just, um, so, I, I'm still, I'm a little, I just need some more direction. Okay, so help me fill in these blanks. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, based on what Dr. Fritz just, based on what Dr. Fritz just said, because he said that on July twenty-seventh, they're going to bring to us all of that data in a work session and all of that, so we'll have it in our hand. And then, on August third, the team is getting together to take the strategic plan and school improvement plan. So, Mr. Dorn, would it be appropriate to put off the setting of the goals till August twenty-fourth? Because the reason why I'm saying is, if we get all of this on July twenty-seventh, we need some time to, like, look at what they've given to us, and then if they meet on August third, and we, say, did the survey at that point, um, because they'd have a better handle on it themselves, I mean, what do you think? Would, would, I mean, versus August tenth, could we go to August twenty-fourth and have more information gathered to be able to set goals? I mean, how does everybody else feel about that?
Yeah, I mean, it's important that Dr. Fritz be okay with that at fifteenth versus twenty-fourth.
I'm absolutely fine with it. Like I said, I'm, I'm not looking up. Like I said, I'm, I'm not looking up, keep going.
Right. You just, you just want a year to, to know what your goals are and-
Yeah, and I think by the 24th, to be honest with you, I think you'll have more opportunity. You know, I, I really do think it'd be beneficial to have that school improvement planning training with our principals, so that they see the marrying of that, because a lot of times what happens, happened, that the light goes on, and I, I think they see that connection.
So could we pick a date, could the board pick a date for doing the feedback session?
August 24th.
No, no, oh, you want to do it at the same time you're setting the goals, or do you want to do a feedback looking backwards? Feedback looks backwards, goals looks forwards, you want to do them all at once?
I'd rather just talk about goals. I mean, it's great that we'll have the information, and, and I'll share with you, recently I requested some data, and I looked back at where we've gone in three years, and until I saw all that data in front of me, I didn't realize how much we've accomplished in a very short period of time. And so having the opportunity to hear the data and what, you know, what has taken place and where our opportunities are, that will give us the ability to have the goals. I mean, I personally provide Dr. Fritz any feedback I need to in our conversations, and so I never hesitate. And so I, I, I'm okay with just setting the goals, I'll give you an example, Ruben always talks about communication, so you can anticipate the goal's gonna talk about communication. And so, you know, it's not Ruben's goal, because at that point it becomes the consensus of the board and we attach what we consider effective communication. And so, you know, I, I personally don't feel the need for a feedback session as much as I would like the information, the data, so that we can set the goals for next year, that's just my thought process.
One thing, I think the public needs to hear it, I think our public and our employees need to hear the feedback. We are the leaders of the school district, they need to know where we stand, and I think feedback is extremely important, and it's, and when we, when you're in a classroom and teaching, you always go back before you go forward, you go back and say, this is what we've accomplished, this is what we're going to today, and this is where we're gonna go tomorrow. It's that nice stream of, of importance, and I know you do, you do a fine job, and I think a lot of us, we do have great communication with the superintendent, it would be super, but I do believe it needs to be public. Our public needs to know what we, what we think.
Well, and, and it's an evaluation of five months.
But still, it's five months that comes back.
You know, I, I don't see how that can be fair.
But, but by then, just, I'll throw this out, I mean, you know, it's five, five intense months, and it, we're not done, you know? We're talking about June and July and Augs, so you're talking about three quarters of a year as opposed to just, you know, five months, and, and this is not your typical five, this has not been your typical five months. We need to go back and look at YouTube board meetings, we can see why. But, but I think that the feedback piece is, is important, and that, and I, I certainly welcome it, I, I, you know, I, I welcome knowing what my leaders feel like we're being supported on, you know, and where areas we'll change it, that, that doesn't bother me in the slightest. And so whatever you, as you, and Ruben, I did appreciate your comment, I mean, you, you're right, all five of you give me feedback, are you kidding? I had fourteen hours yesterday with Jamie and Ruben giving me feedback, and it's okay. It's, it's, it's okay, and I, and I love it and I take it, but what I'm, what I think is really important for us to move forward is what Ruben said too, is the goals. I mean, it's, we, we give the feedback and we're gonna do it, but then let's launch the sucker and get this thing going and, and make sure that we can get it back to its normalcy with a, what a, what a school district is supposed to be doing, let's get it going in August very quickly.
So, all right, let me go back to my timeline I suggested. July 27th, they're gonna bring to us all of this documentation on the strategic plan where we're at. August 3rd, he's going to, they're going to meet with all of the leadership teams to marry the, or merge the school improvement plan and the strategic plan. If the survey went out at that time, we could have the survey results back by August 10th meeting, we have a workshop and a school board meeting, maybe we give the feedback during the workshop or, or something and set the goals on the 24th. I just don't think I'm ready to, I'll be ready to set goals yet on the 10th, that's why I was wanting to set goals on the 24th.
I think the 10th is too soon as well.
But I'm open to whatever, everybody else, I just want time to look at this stuff.
Is that okay, Jamie?
Yeah, I mean, that sounds good, if, if we're gonna do the feedback, I, I think that the, the feedback is important also because his contract does indicate that you have to say that he's done satisfactorily. So you have to give him a, just a general satisfactory for the year. Plus, you know, Dr. Fritz, I'm sure, would very much appreciate all that feedback, because if he decides he wants to stay with us and you're gonna have to evaluate whether or not you're gonna extend his contract, you don't want to do it in the context of never having told him if you had concerns, because then how unfair is that? If, you know, it's like, well, you know? So this gives you the opportunity to put out, out, out on the table any concerns you have, and, and if any, and then he, he knows that upfront, et cetera, so it lays the groundwork for that. So it's a look back on August 10th and a look forward on August 24th. And so the only blanks that I have in my mind are on August 24th. The reason that you're seeing the evaluation written as it is, is because the board back then, the, the evaluation instrument that I referred to, that we've used for a long time, fifteen-plus years prior to this, was very broad, very generic, and the board was like, you know, I, this isn't doing anything really, and so we need more specifics. And so what you see in this document is that under these more generalized headings, for instance, performance or student achievement, relatively specific, but then goals were even more specific, and so not yet to do what anybody did in the past, I'm just pointing out, when you are coming back with these August 24th goals, are we going to do, if I hear it correctly, we're gonna take the strategic plan and we're gonna insert that and add board communication as a sixth item, and we're gonna determine how to weight those. And I guess we've got the language, obviously, in the strategic plan for purposes of setting out the, the broader evaluation approach. Are you going to actually have additional goals similar to the ones here, like, Volusia County becomes an A-rated school within, you know, within the next year? Or we have, I don't even know what we have, but, you know, two F, two F schools are gonna be brought up to D's type thing or anything.
Yeah, or even graduation approved.
Graduation, how much, you know, how much graduation improvement, that kind of stuff. I'm just throwing all this out, not looking for answers, but I'm looking for some broad direction on, are we going to do, take that approach? And if we are, you guys then know what you need to be thinking about between now and August 24th.
So, Mrs. Cuthbert, on August 10th, you have a workshop, is that workshop already full?
I don't think so.
So could we just turn that workshop into being the feedback slash, kind of throwing out what we want the goals to be and then solidifying them on August 24th?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Yeah, the, the only thing, when you, when you, you have to make a determination that the superintendent has done, done a satisfactory job for the last year, that'll have to be a vote. So we would have to have a action item in addition to, if you want to do your workshop and give your feedback during the workshop, I don't think there's any problem with that, but you will have to have at least one action item where you just, you know, confirm that he did a good job.
Yeah, I hear that. I, I, I'm still in favor of doing the feedback session in, in July, because I think once we get to August, we're really moving forward. July, the end of July would be a re, a reflection on, on the past crazy year that we went through. We would have that data from our district staff, you know, so, so that would be good too. And we get the, we get the feedback session over and we do the vote, you know, it's, it'd be a, a regular school board meeting. And then the information from the survey, I think, would be helpful for Dr. Fritz as he meets and plans with his team, right, Jamie?
Yes.
For, for next year, because then he could say, okay, look, guys, we have this survey results, here's, here's what, here's what the, the people are, are saying that, so, you know, let's plan to address those things, ensure, ensure that up, and I like Jamie's idea of on August the 10th, at that workshop, we could then only have to concentrate on what are the weights that we want to give each of these things, and then which goal or goals do we want to give to Dr. Fritz? And then he would know that by August the 10th and would be set to go, and try to get this thing back on schedule again, anticipating we're gonna have a normal year, right? We will. Can, can you live with that?
No, I'm good with that.
I would like to hear from, if we do that on the 27th, we have not heard from the assistant superintendents of the success of the, you know, their presentation to the board of the success of the strategic plan.
We would hear from them first.
Okay.
Them first and then-
And then, and then we get the feed-
Okay, so that would be at the July 27th board meeting?
Board meeting.
Okay.
Because we gotta have an, an official vote, if you will.
Okay, and then August 3rd, when we present the marriage or the wedding-
Yeah.
Then that's, that is a moving forward presentation.
Yes.
Okay.
And do we have a board meeting the 3rd? No.
No.
The board meeting is the 10th, and, and the workshop.
The 27th, we anticipate being each board member, I mean, each order, each goal team coming forward and presenting about ten minutes per goal, and then being able to have some questions after it's all done with the board, so we're looking at about ninety minutes. So if you're looking at a three-hour work session, that would give you ninety minutes for the feedback too.
Okay, so, so we would just, we would go ahead and do the surveying now, so that the data would be available for the July 27th, so we would get the survey data, we would get what each, you know, strategic plan goal brought forward, I, I, I'm good with that a hundred percent.
Okay. Is that clear?
So, so July 27th, we're doing the feedback, that's the look backwards. August 10th workshop, we're gonna be talking about goals, and then I'm gonna prepare the document that would then be heard on August 24th for final approval.
Yeah.
And that tells the superintendent what the goals are for the next year, and it has always been, and I think still should be, the board gives an opportunity to the superintendent to assist in helping to define what the, some of those goals are, because who knows better than he does?
And that would happen on August the 10th.
Yeah, and so if he can provide that kind of, be thinking about providing that kind of information, if you look at the evaluation worksheet, see it's performance rating number one, you know? So you've got these broader things in terms of evaluating his performance, but in terms of the performance compensation, at least historically, although we don't have to do this, I'm just pointing it out, it was performance rating number one and performance rating number two, and those were the criteria that, that drove the performance compensation issues as opposed to, because, you, you, in order to determine whether or not he's gonna get this compensation, you either have to have something relatively objective that you can look to, or you get, it's gonna be very subjective, which is okay, but, you know, again, how much notice does he have, et cetera? And then the board kind of makes a more broad determination on performance compensation. I, you know, I don't know how that works so well, so I'm just saying, give, give that all some thought, and then, so I, I, I think all the pressure's off in terms of preparing a document, because this document would not really be finalized until August 24th, we wouldn't, I wouldn't even have a basis for preparing and, and a different document until August 10th, because you-
10th, yeah.
You would be giving, although I will start with a draft that will put the strategic plan in and start giving you something to look at-
Yeah.
-in the context of the strategic plan replacing those first five and then adding the sixth one, which will be board communication.
Yeah, and just leave that weight column blank.
And leave the weight column blank.
And we'll, and we'll fill it in.
Yes.
Whatever.
Okay, so the feedback is on July 27th, is that going to be at the board meeting? Okay, so that's at the board meeting?
So, wait a second, I just need to be clear, did we say the feedback's actually the board meeting or not, the, I thought it was gonna be the board workshop, the workshop was gonna be staff to present the update on the strategic plan, is that not, is it, was it not gonna be 90 and 90, or is, is, is it gonna be at the actual board meeting?
I'm, I'm sure there'll be com, comments, but I think for, for tense of that, at the board meeting, we have to have an, an official agenda item, superintendent evaluation, and then we can give feedback.
Okay, so we're, we're still gonna go forward on 27th, our team to present.
Yes, yes.
Okay, then the goals, we're gonna present our goals on August 10th during the workshop?
10th during the workshop?
Mm-hmm. And then approval on the 24th.
And then out, between the 10th and 24th, I'll prepare the document, provide it to you in advance, we can come in on the 24th, make whatever modifications you want to it, finalize it, and then we're off and running for the next year.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns? Thank you, Mr. Dorn, that concludes our workshop, we are about twenty-seven minutes over, but that's okay, it was well worth it. Thank you, everybody, we'll see you at-